Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. I'd like to start off with a request for the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda presented.
Motion by Commissioner Bradley, second by Commissioner Vickery, all in favor. I request approval of the prior meeting minutes. Have a motion by Commissioner Stevens. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Vickery, all in favor. I. Next on the agenda, accounts payable.
Okay, we've got people waiting in the meeting minutes, or just, I guess we just have that one session, right?
Correct.
All have those on the table.
Okay.
Okay, presented for payment. If you've had a chance to review accounts payable, do you have any questions? Okay.
Any vouchers?
Okay. Have submitted accounts payable in the amount of $1,124,302.93. If there are no issues with that, I'd take a motion to accept that.
Motion to approve the accounts payable, $1,124,263.93.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bradley to accept the accounts payable, amount of Is there a second? Have a second by Commissioner White, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Up next, Billy Payford, Odenbridge.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Guys, got my activities? Have any questions on what we're up to? We're just kind of laid in, all gravel on North Cottonwood, painting, tabards fixing fence, changing some culverts out. Any questions?
So did we get back our barriers from Pineville?
Yes, we did. Thirteen of them, yep. Yep. So, yeah, we got them back, so that went down good. All right, well, Aaron's got chip seal.
Good morning, everybody. Aaron C. Harper, real ready. Bit up 2025 second chip seal project yesterday. We had one proposal come in from HK contractors. We had two different, we had two bids in here, proposals, one was for sub county portion, and then there was alternate schedule for the town of Pineville. The county's proposal from HK was $2,358,429. The alternate schedule for the town of Pineville proposal was $411,140, for a total proposal Check the numbers out. And would recommend awarding proposal to HK contractors for the 2025 chip seal project.
Chairman, Aaron, did the town already approve their, their portion of the?
The town, uh, caught the eight pairs. Put it in council, theirs, and they will have to do an agreement with the town of Pineville and sub counties.
Perfect, thank you.
There was some discussion at the last meeting about the town of Marbleton, and they have their engineer, Orsner, they bid their project out first of May, and so their town engineer took care of their project. They had Keith Hughes do all their crushing for their chips and stuff, so they're separate.
Any other questions?
So, Billy, you cut quite a little back this year.
What's that?
You cut quite a little back this year.
Yeah, we could, we could.
You're coming in underestimated, should you add some?
We just tried cutting as much as we could, you know, I think we'll be good. We put a lot of crack sealing in, so we should be, I think we'll be good.
Beat the bike path again, is there any bike path working? That was not, that bike path from North Piney to the airport road is, is splitting pretty bad, I don't know.
Clayton, we were just talking about that, and I know Mike's getting some numbers and stuff that we have to do so we can get all them agreements taken care of.
Does the project start and end?
Uh, we have a finish date of September 16th for chip seal work.
And it'll start at when?
As soon as, it'll probably be in August.
Thank you.
We've got about, you know, three to four weeks to get contracts back and forth.
Amazing how slow they are.
Yeah, I did, I did talk to HK contractors yesterday, if they're gonna try to fit it in with that Marbleton work, because they were awarded that Marbleton job, so.
Nice.
Hopefully the towns are doing some things.
I hope. Any discussion on the commissioners?
I guess I've just got one question that doesn't really have much to do with anything except the mobilization of this stuff. And I know it's part of the project, don't get me wrong there, but, you know, they wouldn't be here if we didn't authorize the project for them, so why is that mobilization always so big? I mean, you know, if I was to go do a job, mobilization'd be a small part because I want the job, is the way I'd look at it. So why is this always, I mean, that's half million dollars to bring their equipment in and then go ahead and charge for the job after that.
Yeah, there's a lot that goes into the mold, it's also moving, moving your equipment in, but, you know, other truck drivers are, are contract truck drivers, they pull in, they bring in, so they put them up in hotels, and then it's just, you know, I don't know how they're gonna bid the job, you know, every contractor bids a little differently, he may, one contractor may bid mobilization lower and then put larger numbers in the unit prices, others may put more money in the mold and make the unit prices lower.
At the end of the day, the final number's what we gotta look at, I understand that.
The final number is what it is.
Yes. Okay, well, fair enough, I'll take that as an explanation.
You know, I, I looked at mold from past years, Mr. Vickery, and, you know, last year was pretty close, this year they, they put a little more on me.
Yeah.
But their unit prices are, are lowers than my estimates, so.
Okay, that's all I had, I just, look at that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vickery. Any other discussion pertaining to this? Your motion on the Sublet County Roads Chip Seal Project in the amount of $2,358,429.
Chairman, I move that we award the 2025 Sublet County Chip Seal Project to HK contractors in the amount of $2,358,429, with the town's approval of their portion of $401,140, bringing the total to 2,769,569.
Thank you for clarification on your motion, Commissioner White. Is it only inclusive of the town proposal, or could it stand alone if the town?
If the town opts out, obviously we don't pay that $400,000 if they opt in, that's the total price is what it is.
Thank you. Motion by 25 Sublet County Chip Seal Project, awarded to HK, tentatively awarded HK contractors in the amount $2,358,429 for the county portion, which may include, if accepted by the town of Pineville, their portion of $411,140, for a total of $2,769,569. Is there a second on that?
One second.
Is there discussion? All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you very much, I haven't noticed the word for the clerk to sign, so I'll take it to her.
Thank you, actually.
I understand, sir.
Great.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
I just got a couple quick project updates, I finally, Teletractors is finally gearing up to start on the industrial site, I don't know if it'll be in the next couple of weeks, but they're, we're starting to set our GPS control for them, so that project will get started here next month or so. And then I sent you guys a copy of the plans that I have for the South Piney Road and what I think my estimate'll be, I think that's gonna be high, but those are the latest numbers I have, so I'm hoping that since it's winter work, that maybe we'll get a better deal on it, but that's kind of my best guess of where we're at, so I'll send that to the supplier of that aluminum box covert, make sure I didn't miss anything since it's the first time I've done it, then I'll get ready to send it out for proposals to start this fall, and I'll leave it up to the contractor whether they wanna start in November and try and push to get it done, or leave it to spring and push to get it done, but I'll have those hard dates because the ditch pretty much controls our construction windows, so.
Sure.
That's pretty much all I have as far as our projects go.
Well, if they can do it this fall, that's better.
That's what I would.
We don't want to mess around in the spring, I'm thinking, sure enough, the minute you pull in there, somebody's gonna want that ditch on.
Yep, yep, so I'll probably, I'll put a little heavier language in the special provisions to really push to get it done this fall, and then we talked about if they do get weathered out, we'll put a single lane detour in if they can't finish it this fall, and just so we have access and don't keep the road closed all the way.
All right. Finally got a vehicle for the extension office, just making sure, because I know we did talk that you guys might want to take the new one and give them the old one, it's basically the same, it's got the same stuff inside, it's basically the same model, just it's black. So I don't know if you guys wanna do that.
That's what I'd recommend.
Okay.
Writing, probably, I just need some other title.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Other than that, ice management, busy, C and D, metal's coming in like crazy, everything's going good down there. Golf course, plugging along, everything's going good out there, still.
Good, good customer flow.
Yeah, a lot, courses busy, courses busy, real busy, we had some pretty big tournaments coming up over the next month, so.
Get heavy dry.
Golf course, it's, no, it's.
When you drive in on the left.
Oh, yeah, a little bit, just.
Make it rain.
Make it rain, well, our spring cars are doing really good, we had, we had some heads that we had to get changed out and stuff, but, yeah, then suddenly I had to, we were doing some work, so we had to leave them off for a couple days, it doesn't take long to keep them off, so.
Have you done your duty and gone out and played it to make sure it's all up to specs?
You know, I haven't played it this year yet, I've been around it enough, though. Sand traps and, we replaced a lot of pipe, a lot of bridges and stuff, so, yeah, Sam's played it a couple times.
Yeah, good, it's looking good, looking real good.
So, yeah, that's basically what I got.
And I will say on the landfill, first of July, we do our annual report, we survey, figure out our volumes, so I get a better idea of when we have to start that line to sell, because we might wanna phase that out, because it'd be a pretty big project, but I think we'll still have about five years before we have to start that, but just keep it on everybody's radar.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Up next, Chad Cooper, monthly report. Stand in by.
Here to give our monthly report for the fire department, you all have a copy of the same stuff I'm going over. Highlights for the month are our recruiting academy. We completed a hands-on water supply and hose line training, for them, they're all doing really well, and then it says the start preparation for their live fire training, but we did that last Saturday and that went very well. We combined the recruit training with some other higher level certification training and spent most of the day out at the tower, that training went, went very well. We're using that facility more, we've been doing a lot of cleanup and work around it, we got rid of all those junk cars and a lot of the debris and a lot of the old lumber, some of the old props that weren't useful, we got them out of there, so it's looking much better. Cooperative services, that's all stuff that was on Chad's agenda for the month, if you wanna just look those over, if you have questions about any of them, or I'd go over every, every single one, but, okay. Busy month administratively, doing a lot of prep, getting ready for fire season, meeting with a lot of people, did have one inspection up at the hospital, I went up and observed the fire sprinkler system test, and that went really well, so it's gonna be a nice facility, it's nice inside, that all passed to flying colors, so hopefully we can get that building finished and move in here pretty soon. Volunteer hours for the month, 268 volunteer hours, that's firefighters coming in on their own time and doing things, like cleaning the equipment, cleaning up the station, there, one of the stations we're building some shelves, just little maintenance things, and 268 hours is pretty good for people to come in and volunteer their time.
Yes, it is, really good.
We, we've got an excellent group of people, I couldn't be more proud of them.
I can tell you, your fire, they're pretty amazing, you did.
And they?
Yeah.
Yeah, they got right on it, and, oh, and it's, because of the history of the building, we were very cautious, but there's nothing to indicate anything suspicious.
Really?
So the report'll be out in a little while, but, until I get the, the results, I really do wanna release it, but I can tell you, there was no funny business going on, it just, just a regular cause, and we'll get that out to everybody shortly. So Emily, I was gonna talk to you about the budget.
Um, our budget is still looking like it's in good shape, we spent some more money this month, I have two pending very small grants out that I'm waiting to hear back from, that's about it.
Pretty easy, thank you, do we have any?
Well, I've got a couple of questions, just information for me, and then a suggestion for me.
Please.
Okay. The beanies, that thing really caught my attention, a hundred, a hundred beanies, what, what is a hundred of them for?
Um, it is to reward our firefighters, it's part of our recruitment and retention, and lots of times in the winter, they like to wear a beanie rather than a ball cap to keep their head warm.
No, I understand the reason for them, I just, the number is what I was curious about.
We have 77 firefighters, so one for each firefighter and some for the recruits next year, where I got the number of a hundred.
Okay, fair enough, Reed and I were curious, because I've never seen it show up before since I've been here, and I just wondered why all of a sudden.
And that recruitment and retention line item is, is kind of new, we're slow to get to use it, and we wanna reward our firefighters, so that was something that they've been asking for, um, and we decided that we'd go ahead and give them what they wanted, keep them happy, Doug.
Okay, yeah, fair enough on that one, so the next one is an interesting one, so an accounts payable, and, and I'm just, don't get me wrong here, I'm not questioning it, I'm just curious, so I guess I am kind of questioning it, so there was, there was an invoice for reimbursement on travel to deliver, uh, a fire that was at Big Piney.
That was an invoice for me to reimburse me for gas in my personal vehicle.
I, I understand that, and that's kind of where I'm going, so bear with me for a moment.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, number one, I'm curious to know why there wasn't a facility in Big Piney that could have provided what you've needed, and then number two, so there's eight pickups and unified fire, plus there's county facility or county vehicles that would be available, so I understand the reason behind it, don't get me wrong, but I think in the future, I would prefer, rather than have a personal, a personal vehicle involved, that you take advantage of the equipment the county already has to deliver them.
I understand that, and if I could explain why I did it the way I did it, sir, I was in Pineville when I got the call from Bob saying that it's very hot, the bunker gear that the people wear is very hot to wear, period, when it's 80 degrees out, their body temperature increases, we had the rehab trailer out there, um, I am, I don't consider myself an emergency response person, I am in the background of every picture as support, and as I was leaving the station that night, Bob said he needed meals for these people to replenish their energy, so being in Pineville, not knowing what other emergency services they would need, do they need a trailer from Pineville, do they need a trailer from Daniel, is there another firefighter from Pineville that's gonna respond, that needs the use of that pickup truck more than I do, or the $35 in gas, um, I chose to use my personal vehicle, and I would do it again to deliver that food to them.
Well, I'm not, I'm not arguing that point, what I'm saying is, if a county vehicle is available, I know there is one, 99% of the time that's available.
I understand that, and if you want me to drive to Daniel or Kindle Valley to get their truck to drive to Big Piney, I'd be more than happy to, but I'm still gonna submit my voucher for gas in my personal vehicle.
If you use your personal vehicle, fine, I understand that, but if, if it doesn't need to be, that's what.
My intention is to use a company vehicle. Being in an emergency situation, I didn't know what other needs were gonna arise at, at the incident, and that's why I made the decision that I did.
Okay, fair enough, but still, I have to believe there had to have been a, someplace in Big Piney that you could have got the food if it was important, I understand the importance of it.
I still would've had to drive to Big Piney to pick it up and deliver it to the fire, though, Doug, wouldn't I?
Enough said. I'm not gonna get into one-on-one argument, it's just not worth it at this stage of the game, but you, just, that's enough for me, okay, I'm through with it, thank you. I've spoke my piece, now, Mr. Jones, go forward.
If it's convenient to pick up a county vehicle, great, if not, then we just proceed for efficiency's sake and make sure that we have the needed support.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We don't have a spare vehicle actually available for her to take, everything we've got's tied up, so she would've had to drive clear down to either Boulder or up to Daniel to get a pickup, and that.
Sure.
Kind of duplication of.
No, I understand what, what was said by all parties, so thank you.
Excuse me, I guess I wasn't quite through, there is a vehicle available at Rodenbridge for any department to use, okay, doesn't matter who you are, all you have to do is call up and get it, now I know there's times when that can't work, understand that, but there are times when it can work, and I also understand that, when it can work, I think it should work, it's not about the little dab of money, it's just about the idea behind it.
I would rather drive a county vehicle than my personal vehicle.
Okay, so then, perfect, and so, next time around, if you need to make a delivery like that, wherever it's at, call, see if a county vehicle is available, there's, I'm gonna tell you, most of the time there will be one, our county at Rodenbridge office, and if it's not, then have at it the way you've been doing it, I have no issue with that, but I think if the options are there, we should take advantage of them, that's what I think.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Vickery, any other questions? No. Good job, thank you for everything, appreciate it.
Thank you. I was gonna talk a little bit about the fire, but with Kerry here, he's in the middle of it, so he should be able to give you a good briefing on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time, um, so I originally had one topic on the agenda, and with this latest set of events with the lighting and whatnot, now I figured we'd maybe cram two in if there's time, Monument Ridge prescribed fire project that's been ongoing for the last handful of years, specifically just last year with the lighting of it, and then an update on the horse fire, so, do you all prefer to start with one or the other, doesn't matter.
Whichever you're.
Okay, um, we'll start with the horse fire, since it's kind of the emergency at hand right now, um, so I did bring some of the latest maps from this morning's briefing, you guys can have it, you can do my.
Thank you.
So as of this morning, it's sitting right around that 900 acre mark, and there's been some different numbers thrown out there, that's been 960 at once and 840, and anyways, that's just kind of the, as they get more accurate ideas where, where the little spots are and stuff, and if the spots are true, that's kind of what's driving that number, but, I'm assuming you've all know about the fire, but it, there's a lightning caused fire that got called in on Friday, and our, one of our east zone Indian crew were, was first on scene, it's pretty tough access, you have to hike into it from any, either direction, it's probably two mile hike or so, 45 minutes to get in there, originally got on scene, it was, I think, three acres called in, and then shortly after, it made a run to 10 acres, and then a couple hours later, it was up to. And then a couple hours later, it was up to like thirty to forty-five acres. And then that's when they, we started calling in other resources for the next day. And then it actively burnt through that night. And I think Saturday morning, it was in the four-hundred and something acre range. And, uh, and yeah, and now we're at nine-hundred as it continues. The, the plan is to keep the fire between South Horse Creek and basically north east side. There's an old, you're going to have the Horse Creek Fire from two thousand seven, that old fire scar in there. And it's been checking up and they're really pretty good. So the goal is to keep it, you know, out of that fire scar. We don't even see some spots on the map. Some of them, that fire scar is still tricky. Some of it might be true, some, a lot of them, it's not true. So they'll, they'll keep eyes on those little spots and address any of those issues. But we're, we're trying to keep it out of that fire scar. Or in the natural features, the meadows and whatnot. And, um, right now, the fire's backing down the hill into South Horse. And that's where they're prepping the line is in the bottom, in using the natural features of South Horse Creek, the willows and all the greenery to really check it up in there. And, uh, that's where you're seeing the smoke from is on that south side, south slope. And, uh, the, it's just, we, we're a time of year, early in season. You know, the meadows and the sagebrush is really green, that's, that stuff's not burning. It's just the pockets of timber that have the dead and down in it. And it's, it's really receptive to the spotting from one patch to the next, to the next, to the next. So if you go in and try to directly, you know, address one's particular timber patch, the wind's been kicking up in the afternoon and it just spot over in the next one. And, you know, then you got fire. So it's a little bit tricky on, on how they're, they're going about it. But they got a good plan. On the north side, when it's rolled over the ridge and going into the main Horse Creek drainage, that hits a north slope aspect, so it's in that aspect, as you can see on the map. But it's, it's way less activity in there. And, uh, so, so they're, they're beginning to make a plan on that north side to, to anchor it in there and figure out the best holding features and, and keep it from also moving to the west. And they're using natural features and hand line to do that. All of this is basically hand line due to the nature of no access. And we got, like this morning, we've got three helicopters, one's down for maintenance, but a couple of different types of helicopters for supporting the fire. And, um, quite a few crews, hotshot crews on scene, type-two hand crews on scene. So we're getting the, starting to get the manpower in there. And, uh, so that if everything goes as, as planned, it'll, it'll, uh, won't go any further south than that South Horse Creek drainage. It won't go any further north than that main Horse Creek road. Kind of box it in between that old fire scar. Uh, it's a type, we have a sign in place. So right now, from the horse, now the Horse Creek is closed, because that's the main access point. We're using the parking lot there, the snow parking lot for kind of our spike ICP camp. We'll be moving in food trailers into that parking lot. So the firefighters can get their food closer to them and we don't put a tax on. Right now, we've just been using the Daniel Junction, they've been great and supporting us. But they're only limited to so much, so.
Sure.
And, uh, with, when we hit a certain number of bodies on the ground, it triggers us to work nationally with, with food services, so that, that got triggered. So we're trying to keep it a little bit more local to, for longer, but we haven't, we haven't triggered it, we can't get around it. So, um, we got that on order and the food trail will be, be put out there at the snow parking lot.
Mr. Chairman, will there be any sheep or cattle allotments shut down due to this?
So, um, we were in conversation about that. That's one of my priorities to keep my tabs on. Right now, they, there, there's two allotments in there. I believe it's the Sarah Faith, George has one on the South Horse Creek side. And then, uh, I think it's Lou Roberts has his, which is up the Horse Creek drainage. Both their on dates aren't until July. And if, if this goes as planned and, and kind of checks up where we need it to check up, I don't foresee any issues with allowing them to put their cattle on. I've been working with Buckinghamberry, the range folks that manage it for Big Piney. And, uh, there's some options to, we can rotate pastures and stuff and have like George start on the other end and work his way. So there's some options there. And, um, and, but for some reason, if it, if it gets across drainages and gets, you know, we can't catch it and keep it in check, then we'll have a little bit more conversation. But we have some options to, to navigate that if it comes to it. And where, you know, maybe Buckinghamberry can escort them through the fire. We'll allow them to be in the closure area to, to work with the cattle and get them associated in there. Is there any questions that any of you have for that?
Mr. Chairman, I do. So is the crow?
So the east of Monmouth, I think we're three or four miles from that right now.
But it's not making a move in that direction.
No, and that's my priority, keep that on that. That was what I was worried about the most. Anyway, going into the forest, we can, we can let that happen a little bit. But, you know, I think it's going to the east, which has been the prevailing winds. But, um, but right now, we haven't, that, that old fire scar has been keeping it, keeping it from advancing.
Sure.
And, you know, we've been doing, I think, a pretty good job at, at the open communication. That's why I wanted to bring, you know, you all up to date on it and we're going to work and, you know, involve. Got the BLM, you know, communicating with them, even though this is solely on Forest Service. BLM's over on the Monmouth side and, and state's been, we've been communicating with state, BLM, county, so you guys. So just trying to keep everybody in the loop.
Appreciate the update. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on the fire? Okay, now my second topic, which kind of relates. Our next phase of Monument, um, so Monument, just give you a quick briefing on it. I'm sure you've all heard of it. It's been a project, it was a, a project that was brought forth by partnerships and, um, areas that were strategically picked to, to do some fuel reduction works and prescribed fire to a couple of different drivers there. The main one was a, it's mule deer winter migration route. And the conifer encroached in there a lot and it's, uh, competing out the Aspen. So they're trying to get the Aspen rejuvenate and fires are the best ways to do that. And, uh, so through Sublet County, um, and Mule Deer Foundation and Game and Fish and Forest Service, BLM State, they all had meetings, quite, I think it's been four or five years ago, to, to kind of develop this project. And, uh, and the second component of that was it's in the wildland urban interface. And, and it's a kind of a, a range in there that is between the old twenty-sixteen Clip Creek Fire Scar and the twenty-eighteen Roosevelt Fire Scar. So figured if we could do some fuel reduction work in there, we could kind of connect those two old fire scars and, and kind of make things a little bit more solid with the connecting. Oh, if a lot higher we got. Do you know what, Hobart Ranches and Monverant community, all the ranches along there could be, could be impacted by that. So, um, last year, there was a couple of things that stood us down before I got here last year, um, in this position. One was COVID, you know, that kind of shut everybody down. So we didn't get to burn that year. Another year, we, there was a, a top-down Forest Service shutdown of all prescribed fires because of a bad one that got away down in New Mexico. So they just held off all fire. And, um, and then it's really tricky, the way, getting the correct weather windows in there. We have to have the right prescription of parameters to burn successfully in there. It's in the burn plan that way, for a reason. And, uh, so last year, lo and behold, my first year here, about two months after I got here, was that window. And, um, so we were able to, to start and burn in Monument. And, and we started on the north end and, and we had a really good burn window that lasted for quite a while. And, and we were able to get, kind of how you track it's a little bit tricky, but around two, twenty-five-hundred acres is what we burnt last year. The thing that we didn't expect was the, the weather pattern that came through. It wasn't normal in there. There's always shots of moisture that comes over that ridge. And, and we didn't get any of that last year hardly. We got a little bit, but not nothing that we could really rely on. So it, it put firefighters on the ground for, they near three months. We, I think we had like ten days of ignition, something like eight to ten days. And then, and then they were on the ground for three months, making sure that they put it in check for when it kept drying out through the summer, it didn't become an issue in, towards the fall. And, uh, they were successful at that. But, um, I heard a lot from the community on that. You know, they weren't expecting that duration, they weren't expecting the smoke. And, uh, smoke's relative in terms, you know, it's like, there's, there's bad smoke and there's not so bad. But anyways, it wasn't, you know, it, it would settle down in the valley. And I understand, I, I understand smoke and their concerns. But, uh, but what I realized is, is, uh, some of this communication that's happened on this in the past, it's starting to get outdated. There's new players, I'm one of them, and you're a new chair. And it's just people that come in and out of the valley. And, and I, my goal this year and my forest supervisor is to increase the communication around that. Partners, you share some of your thoughts on just the project and continuing the project and advancing it. There was some lessons learned from last year, obviously, in our next project, which is, this is kind of zoomed. There's a couple of pages there, the second page. Zooms in on what the first page is. And, uh, so our next phase is called, Monument is the whole project. The, the big gray circle is like a third twenty-eight-thousand acre area. But the burnable pieces within are, are smaller, obviously. So our next one's called the nutting draw. And it's just right at a thousand, just over a thousand acres this time. So, you know, last, last year, we burnt twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand acres. We're going to scale that back and not burn as much and, uh, per entry. So, um, this will be right at a thousand acres, which in theory should be less smoke, less time on the landscape, less, oh, everything overall. But, and we're starting to, I'm sure you're all familiar with the area, but we're starting to kind of make the corner around and up the Upper Hoback. So we're kind of getting away from the, the main drag of Monverant. And, uh, and the highway there, which is a good thing, because that's a very popular highway. And, um, so as we wrap around, we'll be moving more up the Upper Hoback as we continue into the future with these firms. So my, my goal is if, if, you know, start here and, and if, if you guys are all comfortable and, and, you know, still support the overall mission of prescribed fire on the landscape, working with partners, mule deer and all this stuff, I would like to, hopefully this spring, summer, I guess summer now, have another public meeting in, in Monverant there and try to get engaged more, to try to, you know, explain to them that, some of the tactics and, and how we're moving forward and some of the lessons learned that, from last year and how our next entries will be a little bit different and just try to bring, bring them along too. Because we did have an impromptu public meeting last year after Monument was going, our original phase. I heard a lot of different, you know, one, I didn't know about there's a couple of reasons behind that one, but we originally had public meetings years ago, we just didn't turn home. I know a lot of people have been there, whether they're second home or something, whatever, they, they don't show up until certain times of the year. So, um, I think we missed a little bit of opportunity trying to align that public meeting when it needed to happen to get the, get the people in the room. So, and, uh, and no matter how hard I try and I understand, I'm not going to cheat. All people just won't come or ignore it until it's lit and voice their concern. So, um, so that's the next phase, nutting draw. We won't, especially with this fire now, nothing will happen this spring. Are, we basically have two windows to, to time our burning, spring and then the fall. There's benefits to both. Spring is, everything's a lot wetter. So you can kind of manage the fire more into your fuel types. And, um, smoke is better to dissipate out of the valley in the spring. And then the fall, you know, you're, you're hoping, your sagebrush and your other components are more volatile at that time of year to burn, to control it. You have the hunter access in there. And, uh, and then you're just kind of hoping and praying on a weather event that will actually shut it down. And if that extends clear through October, November, you know. And then the other part of that is, a lot of the resources that we need are off on wildfires. You know, we had pack trail last year and stuff that took all week. So there's, there's some nuances with the fall burns, but, but those are basically our two options. So this spring, we're not, we're not going to burn in the, the spring. And if I get buy-off and, and, uh, get everybody in alignment and have an opportunity for a fall burn, it, it might happen, but just have to see how the resources are and if it's even a window to do that.
So your main goal is just to change it over to Aspen?
To increase the Aspen, yeah, for the, for the.
There's no value in trying to log any of it, there's no access or, or good way to.
Don't really have.
Get broader.
No. And I think there was a component to that in the past, but the Roosevelt burnt that up and it kind of got, cut out of this. But as we move forward, just kind of off-topic on that, we are, with an executive order that's come down with the new ways to increase on offense for fuel reduction on the firewood. So we're, that's one of the teams that set up, looking at that. As in a specific project right now, no, we don't have a lot of access to, to log, and it was never set up. Any thoughts, concerns?
Well, here, here we go again.
Here we go.
So I, I hear you're not going to try to burn this fall, maybe, is that correct?
Potentially. If, if everything logs with resources and where the fire season is and if we get a weather window and a lot has to come into alignment.
Okay, well, I guess I'm just going to speak from being here for a lot of years. And this is a year, for whatever reason, it's as dry as I can remember for a long time. And I wouldn't anticipate it getting wetter as you go into the fall until we get to the snow season. So my recommendation is just take a sabbatical. Because as dry as it is right now, and it can only get drier unless we should get a a deluge, which that doesn't look like out there.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, I mean, the things that normally are easy to do from water standpoint just aren't this year. And I don't know what's brought that about, they're just, it's just dry.
Yeah. Um, thank you for that input, man. And I, I agree with you, there's a lot that has to line up perfectly for a fall burn. I don't, I don't want to just put a hard no out because you, you just never know, you know. So I don't want to set it up like, we're not, absolutely not. But it would take a lot to get a, a fall burn lined up this year.
Yeah.
Any fall burn, to be honest with you, but if for some weird reason we get that weather window, we get some late fall storm and something, I still want to be able to have it available on the board to strike up a conversation again.
No, I understand that, but, you know, and then to address the spring burn. So there needs to be a window there, in my opinion. To address the spring burn, so there needs to be a window there, in my opinion. That if you start too early in the spring, regardless of what it looks like.
Yes, it is. We just part of. Foundation has set plots in there monitoring all before and after and all that stuff, so but the 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 deer and the elk, you know, given. Birth at that time of year and stuff, it's some. And that, yeah, we take. So the and so we do, yes, we do have those windows. One, it's like that area holds snow and. By the time the snow comes off and then we got to start monitoring our fuel moistures and we do that by different classifications, you know. Hour hour fuel, ten hour fuel, hundred hour, thousand hour fuels, and then when we get that alignment, when the moisture gets right, then that's when we. We kind of trigger it so we can get the the results that the burn plan have in them. But you were spot on this year. We did some fuel moistures when this wildfire got going and the bigger heavier fuels are very dry right now. Very dry. Which is a result of. What you're seeing on the ground.
Yeah, well, I know there's a spot on the upper. On Minor Creek that the gentleman that was here fifty-six years ago said, when that snowbank is gone, the water's gone. That snowbank's been gone for two weeks. So that indicates to me at least. How dry that country is. You only have to go around there and watch the snail move and the dust comes up from the snail. You know it's dry.
Please. So I have a little clarification on connecting the two burn scars. I didn't quite. Understand that. What's the reasoning behind connecting them?
Yeah, it's just with the Cliff Creek Fire and the Roosevelt Fire, it's it's removed the fuel. More than we wanted, but that was out of everybody's hands, you know, with a wildfire and. This project kind of connects those two burn scars. So if right now there's a lot of fuel in between those two that isn't burning, that if a wildfire got established, it couldn't pick up. And go and this project will eliminate some of that fuel. So maybe it will keep it lower on the intensity scale to allow us to. To catch a wildfire that got established.
It's limited how far it can go now with those two. Scars up there, right?
Yeah.
Where you're burning, you know.
Yeah. It's just like when you, when you look at a big.
So like in, so how miles, how far is between two, I don't know, varies up twenty to five times, but what's the closest those two two sides are to the monument? Like three miles to between the bar?
Well, I'd say I think it all. Burn scar up the upper Hoback. And then the Cliff Creek Fire scar is basically. Well, we anchored off of it last year when we started the ignitions up to the north. We anchored off of that, burned that Cliff Creek. So kind of behind the Elkhorn, the the gas station there, that's the Cliff Creek line. And then you go around to the upper Hoback and that's the Roosevelt line. So that's, I don't know what that is.
Open ground in between there, too, that wouldn't burn, right? Sagebrush, there's a lot. The upper Hoback on the right side, there, a lot of that sagebrush.
Yeah, a lot of that sagebrush, which is a good thing, until you get a year that the sagebrush dries up enough to burn, then that can burn like crazy. But that's more of a year, September, October, on dry years.
So so when you had that meeting in Monterey, what what were the different topics brought up by the public? Besides the smoke.
No, no, no.
I know it was kind of.
The smoke, well, one thing that ties to smoke is I don't remember the name, but one landowner there has raises some exotic. Goats or something like that and the smoke is going to kill the goats. So work through that a little bit and and other one, like people want. They don't want to see burnt trees. They came here to see the trees and now they claim that horse liver scissors is burning all the trees up. Another one was they thought the smoke and the lighting of the fire was going to be like three days long, just like. Like we can turn it on and off. And they weren't, they didn't understand and expect the longevity of it. And quite frankly, a lot of that community is scarred by the Roosevelt. Fire, which I understand because of the loss of homes, I I totally understand it. So they're they're carrying some of that from the past that has just. Got their attention real hard.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
If we, if I need something, let us email to you saying, hey, thanks for letting allowing me and showing that like I've had this meeting with you guys and you. Is there anything I can get from that?
Absolutely.
Again, it's just, there's been a lot of rotation on the forest service side and as I'm in this position, I were like, did I get documented? Did I get covered? And it's not. And it's like he said, she said, and these projects are on the landscape from. Years and years and years as people rotate out and stuff. I'm just trying to make it better for all of us that we've. To show the path that we've had conversations and stuff like that, so. I can reach out to you afterwards or however that works out.
That works very well. Thank you. It's already covered.
Got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good.
So Kerry, one, one question, um, separate from the fire monument ridge and the horse. With initiative right now, the federal government's trying to pass down selling off public land. What what kind of update or what are you hearing at a local level on any of that stuff that's potentially coming down the?
At our district ranger level, we're not really hearing anything. Chad Hudson, the force suit might be hearing that, but it seems like that's changing so fast that unfortunately. We almost, we almost read about it sooner than. You know, and it's kind of been two phases. It seemed like this last month, it was originally on board and then all of a sudden it seemed like it went away and then now. Now there's this, how many ever? Three million acres in the map, which a lot of the areas around here, but we haven't had any conversations at our force leadership.
So none of that map or anything else that's been going crazy through media has been gone through your office or the local.
Through the forest.
Can you, can you keep us updated on that? When you see something or hear something or have some sort of information on it? Is there any way you could? Let us know as a commission, what's what's going on?
Absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, there's an email that would have said. We don't need this stuff. Because what we're going to do, what we're going to see is we're. To see, big money is who's going to be able to buy that. They'll they'll lock out whatever they can lock out, just the way it works. We don't need that here and whatever they get in revenue. From those kinds of sales, whether it's here, whether it's in Timbuktu. It'll be gone before the inks dry. That's just how it works in government. There will be no advantage to anybody except for the moneyed people that have procured that property. So it's not a win-win for a lot of folks. It's only a win-win for two people, the big ones and the people that are making these kind of decisions. Why they're doing that is beyond me. But I think as time goes and we would, I would like to see an update whenever you can, whenever you can. You know, there may be times when you can't, would like to understand that also. But we need to be aware of it because I personally, not as the commissioner, but personally, I take an affront to. These kind of things happening here because we've got a gem right here in Sublick County and we need to take care of it. This will not allow taking care of to happen. So that's my comment on that.
Yeah, absolutely. I will, again, my goal is to increase the communication amongst all of us and. So we're all on the same page with all of this. So there's a lot going on and as soon as I hear something and and. I'm allowed to share, I definitely will. As of right now, it seems like this is being held well, well above us. A lot of the stuff going on with the federal government is being held well above our level, even for super. The whole firing, DRP and retirement, all that stuff. It's just, we just find out last minute. We have to react to it. Don't necessarily agree with any of it, but. This is the spot they put us in, but that specific conversation, yeah, yeah. Moving too fast, it seems like, and I don't know who's making all those strings up there on top.
Thank you, your district, I I've had several calls. You've got a blade up on the Wyoming range that's doing some road work.
Yes.
They're they're very.
Thank you for. Camera to Black Rock, you know, it's a lot, so I'm quickly learning in my position here. I'm not calling you in here over here now, but. Think I can nail down to where we can kind of get on rotation of our main roads and I can communicate that to the public so. They understand that, you know, this year it's this road, this road, this road. Next year it's going to be the other one. And then any, you know, side roads that need attentions. So, but thank you for mentioning that. Yeah, roads are very important to me, so I want to stand on top of that.
Thank you for your time and presentation.
Thank you.
Truly appreciate it.
Yep, have a good day.
You too. Next, Andrea Jean, please.
Hi. I sort of mentioned this already. Sorry.
You're good.
So. Teglers in Novo, I met with them to discuss our plan document that'll be coming up that we need to sign in September. They will, Tiffany will be coming hopefully in July, end of July. We're going to try to do it sooner this year to go over. Any changes, but I wanted to give you, well, this one we need to talk about beforehand. This is the discount prescription plan that I mentioned, I think during budget. That would be coming up is something that we don't have to, there's no upfront cost. We're not like enrolling or having premiums for it. It would just be that if we allowed our employees to enroll in this, that it's a cost savings both to the employee. And then also to us and they have been finding the cost savings to be between fifty and seventy-five percent. And so it's significant. The main reason for that is because it is coming from Canada, England, New Zealand and Australia. But it is coming from brick and mortar pharmacies there. They're regulated. Either the same as here or even more so. Their regulations are even more so. Prescriptions will show up looking the same package, the same. Same brand name. This isn't a comprehensive. This is things like that. They would send out, use it through this, a flyer like this to all employees, but I also want to market it during open enrollment to let people. Know, because I would probably just throw something away from my insurance if it came in the mail, so. Just to let them know. So we went through just four employees at the time in the meeting and they showed us. And just with those four employees, there's a cost saving of sixty thousand dollars a year, so. It's, it's pretty significant.
So I got a question. So I know two people that since all this uproar here in Canada, they shut them off. Getting prescriptions in Canada.
So they actually covered that too. So if something like that were to happen, they work with the employee. To get them the same cost at a local pharmacy if something happens. So.
So if you sign up for this, you need to stay with them. Unless you drop, is that right?
I mean. Yeah, I mean, you can stop ordering through them. They still have to send in their prescriptions. So if they're not happy for some reason, they can stop. They're not like enrolling and they're not signing a contract or anything. And it's a three-month rotation, so they only get three months worth of prescriptions each time. So. The reason I needed to bring it now is I needed to get permission to go forward with it, to include it in because it may affect premiums in a good way. For stop loss, which we kind of covered also, but if you have any questions about that, they want to let. They're looking for stop loss carrier right now and they want to include this in it.
Are there any questions?
No, I'm good with it. Thank you. Good job, Andrew.
Yeah, I think this is a huge bonus that we should pursue.
Yeah, that I'm fine. So where do all the savings come from? Somebody got to pick up the tab.
It's because all of the pharmaceutical companies here in the US have inflated the prices.
Well, we know that.
Yeah, and so going outside of the US is what helps.
Over there, you really want to take it?
I absolutely agree. So these medications are already being taken by the employees and they will. They are going to be. To personalize the list according to who they send it to also. And then just so you know, the other things that we talked about for the plan document is. UMI or Gerber Life is our current stop loss carrier. They are not super happy with them. They've had issues, not with us, but with other. So they are looking and I don't know if you remember, but last year that was it. That was our only option. They have had, do have another company that they have that is committing exactly the same. So there might be a switch in that and then the other thing is. That we changed to the prevention plan, the ACA scheduled prevention plan last year. That covers. Counseling if somebody is predisposed to like breast cancer or colon cancer or whatever, but it does not pay for testing. So it is something that I would like to include is it would pay for testing for employees for though if they are predisposed. It's not, they can't just choose to go. A doctor still has to recommend it. They have to have a family history, something, there's different criteria they have to meet. And then we could cover the testing for Lynch syndrome. Which is a colon or endometrial, endometrial, sorry, cancer gene test or the BRCA one and BRCA two gene. That is for breast cancer. The reasoning that I have for this is because there is preventative stuff that can be done if that test comes back positive. It can be preventative surgeries. It can be medications that target DNA repair, things like that. And we did have an employee that did have colon cancer. I think it was two years ago we talked about him. He was a lasered employee. They lasered him at two hundred and fifty thousand and his claims came out to two hundred and thirty-three, five forty-seven, twenty-two. And so we were on the hook for all of that. So. Hopefully something like these testing would prevent something like that, that we could catch it before him and it falls along with prevention. It's not like everyone's going to. So the Lynch testing, Lynch syndrome testing, it's up to $3,000. The BRCA1 and BRCA2 is up to 4,000. And there's a huge range, but that's the high. So.
Okay.
So you don't have to make a decision today, but that's going to, I just want to give you guys time to think about that before we come back in July, August and have that in that plan document.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to see the criteria that you're talking about.
I understand you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, there'll be way more information then, so.
Any more questions?
I have those for you too, by the way. I don't need them right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Up next, Dennis Forenstrom, planning and zoning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
All right, you got a couple of things here for you. First one, update on advertising for the test disposition in my office. We've went through, been working with Andrea on this some and have got, going to advertise it as a planner one or planner two position. Planner one would take care of most all of the office work and everything that we have going on there. If someone had greater qualifications or whatever and could fit into the planner two aspect of it with more responsibilities, it would give us a couple of different options on price ranges and who we could hire depending upon who we end up getting. We went through this last week some. We've got all the revisions made that we talked about. I need to sit down with Andrea one more time and go through this. We're looking at getting that together and having it ready to go out either by the end of the week or first of next week. Looking at probably having that out for, until just after the first of July, about three weeks. And hopefully by then we'll have some.
Do you know where you're going to send out and get my license?
Sure. Okay, thanks. That's what we got. Then this is my Form 1 Letter of Resignation. Back to you at the end of the month. See my position.
Sorry to see that. Thank you, though.
It's just done, so that's. Where I'm standing, so on.
Then you'll continue to be active in searching for office staff, is that correct?
Yes.
Any questions?
Dennis, thank you for your seven and a half years that you've served Sublet County and different boards of commissioners. Appreciate what you've done in that planning office just from the short time I've been in here and sorry to see you go. Sam, wish you, wish you good luck on your future adventure. Endeavors.
Sure. All right, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Wish you all the best in the future, Dennis.
All righty.
Thank you.
Yep.
Clayton?
Yes.
Any special procedures need to be done with the acceptance of a resignation of a department head?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do we, I recommend that we move forward on coming up with some sort of request for employment and advertisement, get it out sooner rather than later being as, I don't have much time to get a replacement. I don't know who would be the best one to forward or run that.
Andrea Jean, would you come forward, please? Commissioner White has certain questions. Are you able to address?
So all the. All of those different companies, you get something.
Can you do that?
Yep. They can go work on it now, pull those up together and then come up with different things. You guys can decide what you want in there.
It's a time sensitive issue. This is effective June 30th. We had no further meetings this month, so we would need to address this currently or in a special meeting or.
We might want to figure out somebody to answer the phone. Janice? You want to move your office in there differently? No, I think we ought to figure out, you know, if there's an in-house person that could go in, you know, that needs somebody to answer the phone in there pretty quick.
So Tess is planning on staying until the end of July.
Oh, July. Okay, I thought it was.
I thought it was first of July she was leaving.
Me too.
End of July, so.
Well, forget what I said. Janice, forget it.
Janice is smiling about that one.
But either way, you know.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think, anyhow, we've seen this. We know Ms. Saul is leaving approximately the same time. I, I think from a standpoint of what's going on with all the reworks to the zoning regs, we better have somebody in here that's got, I hate to say the word experience, but we better reach out there someplace to find somebody that's got some knowledge to come in here to look this over and say, this is what I think needs to happen or this has happened, looks good, et cetera. But we do need somebody that hasn't just got out of college to come in and, and take this thing over. So it's the, the job, the job description needs to be pretty concise and it needs to go out there someplace. I don't know where out there is, but there'll be a model that you can, I'm sure, find. Because right now this thing, because we all know is under a lot of attack, I'll put it like that, from various elements. So the individual, whoever comes in here is going to have to, they'll take that.
Would be email. If you can come up with a tentative job listing today for us, we do, that would be ideal. Unfortunately, I see a short meeting. We can review that and then. Everyone put together a list of what they're thinking and we can't, we want to have everything in full disclosure for the public, of course. And so if we start communication with email only, then there is no transparency there. So perhaps, and I'm open to suggestions, but perhaps the beginning to mid next week, we have a short special meeting in this regard. Any thoughts on that?
I'm going on next week, but I can certainly send anything I think will be added.
Will you have the availability to log in?
Possibly. Service on the road.
Okay, sure. Sam?
I make that work.
Yeah, whatever, whatever needs to occur, I'm fine with.
We're open to other options, of course, but that's the first one that comes to mind. So let's go that direction and see where it takes us.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that direction. Get a whole lot accomplished today. I mean, if you get.
Correct.
We need some time.
Yeah. If you could find the time, would you hurry up?
Yep. I will go right now.
Thank you. Okay, the 10:35 has stepped aside. Our next one scheduled is for 11:45 before we tackle that. Do you want to?
Well, we got a missed sprint there. Clayton's at 11 after the 11:45.
Oh.
That's supposed to be 12. Okay.
Okay, so I go from 10:25, Dennis. The 10:35 has canceled. The next is 11:45 Bradley Hawes following, or excuse me, 11 o'clock Clayton. Is Clayton 11 or 12?
It was supposed to be 12.
Thank you. 11.
Request a quick break first.
Um, let us take a quick break and then.
I'm trying to confirm, I have a limited agenda and I see a poor basis here. Are you?
So the base of one, I forgot to cancel.
You too?
I was waiting to see. I heard she told you guys.
Bradley Hawes.
Buffalo guy. Yeah. I don't know why not.
We're pointing fingers at you already and you haven't even got here. Welcome to confusion.
Into the meeting if we may, and I recognize that you want to.
Yes, thank you. If you wouldn't mind, Bradley Hawes, we can bump you up quite a bit of time here. Great, thank you.
I just came here to ask for an abatement on interest charges on some taxes that are due from 2021, 2022 and 2023. And these were for adult law taxes on natural gas that was produced. I did send the letter with the detail of kind of what I walked into. I was an investor in a company, Buffalo Resources, and we took over five wells that are up on the Mesa in 2016. I had two other partners. I didn't get control of them until 2019 and they're, and reporting done for roughly four years. So it took me a while. I didn't have a oil and gas background to figure out what reporting needed to be done. At the time, there wasn't much left in the company, so I've been able to dig them out of the hole. I've gotten 2016 through 2020 paid and 2024 paid. All that I have left remaining is the 2021 and 2022 and 2023 assessments. The total amount of taxes due on those is roughly 183,000, but they had a crude interest of 35,000.
So Leila, seen any of this? Have you dealt with Leila any?
Penalty is who I've been working with over at. That's us, office. And that's who sent me to you guys.
Sure. Okay, so you, you had mentioned that you paid 16 through 20, is that correct? And how much was that, please?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me. I'm sorry.
Just a ballpark?
Roughly about the same amount that was over these four years. Actually a little bit more because prices were better back then.
180K.
Probably 200 because it was one of those.
And then did you pay a penalty in interest at that point in time? Was that inclusive of the interest, the 180 or was?
No, it would have been closer to 225, 230.
Thank you.
Rough numbers.
No, close enough. And then you said that you paid 24, 23?
No, I paid the taxes for. So I just have a whole, the taxes assessed in 21, 22 and 23.
And how much was 24, please?
24 was down because prices were down. So it was all like 30,000. Those were all paid on time.
Thank you. 23, 20, 21 and then 160,000, did you save for?
180 is what's due on those three years.
And when did you pay the 16 through 20?
I don't know the exact date, but it would have been roughly in 2021.
Thank you.
And then I've been taking care of the state, the Fed. I got to rebuild the site, so it's, all the things came through. So it's just, it's not one of those that I didn't pay. It's one of those, there was nothing left in there.
To pay with.
Had to, yes, build itself back up.
When did you pay the 24?
Monthly, each month.
Thank you. Okay, that works. Hey, any questions for Mr.?
Some of the prices where they are really for you.
35,000. The tax, the interest, the taxes.
Paying the taxes.
You're still going to pay that.
Yes.
So are you asking for the full 35,000?
Well, I understand where you're coming from and, but I, I hope this will be some, next week, somebody might come in and present the same thing to us. I don't know without Emily here, how many times we, you know, did this, you know? I mean, I don't, I have a little hard time because we've got a lot of different oil companies here. So I don't know. I mean, what's tough?
Bradley, I got a couple of questions. Are you guys currently paying monthly? So you guys did go monthly back then, so you had that deferred tax payment you're still making on top of, of this monthly stuff too?
No, the monthly is, we switched to monthly in 2024. So everything there, this is just the remainder that's the hole in between when I've been able to get paid on.
So the last half of 2023 should be part of that deferred payment, right? Then once you guys went monthly for the CIN file, you had to pay the first half.
Correct.
2022, right?
Most of this tax, I've paid the property tax that comes on the assessments.
So this is all?
This is all production. So this is the adware that comes just off of the production of the loss.
Gotcha. And has any of your other tax, your monthly tax payments been late since you've taken over this operation?
No, just, I mean, yes, the ones I have been able to pay.
Pay, but.
But no, once I have, it's one of those I had to get a local person to help me with figuring out all the forms, what reporting need to be done, what was reported, where it was reported, what hadn't been reported. It was one of those. It definitely took me some time.
What's your monthly production right now?
Roughly about 15,000 MCF a month. It's a small, small operation, everything up there.
How many employees do you employ?
I have a husband and wife.
Referring to the, I presume, limited members?
They are completely out of it. When I filed and didn't get any information from the company. In essence, I got handed the company and a box of papers. So now the only member of the.
And they've relinquished their interest in the company?
Mr. Oz, is this monthly, what is the interest rate that accrues on this debt? Monthly? Is it daily?
I would have to ask Emily the exact, I think it's, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
So, I hope I'm not, did we call, get Emily to come in?
I stopped by there. She wasn't, she wasn't in this morning.
Maybe Leila might even know a little information on if we've done this before. I don't know.
I don't, I don't know. Emily was the one.
Yeah, and I was in there this morning getting serious.
And I don't think we have since I've been on the board.
Do you have any input on this Clayton?
Certainly. We can have a conversation about this topic in the executive session.
Are you, I mean, and we'll do a public session?
Yeah, I don't have anything to hide. I mean.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, we're just talking about whether, you know, just your application or not.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, I'd like to request an executive session to discuss a few things with our counsel on this. I'm only one.
Okay.
Thanks, Leila.
Executive.
Yeah. I don't know what would be different going here.
Do we go about conspiracy?
I know. I mean, it's just a yes or no here. I don't know.
Okay, I prefer a public session, but it's consensus is executive session, executive.
It needs three votes, so I'll bring that motion.
Okay. You have a motion to do executive, all in favor? Opposed? We'll move into executive session. Thank you. Please, if you'd be kind enough to step out of the room.
As for our tax, our counsel isn't comfortable that we even have the authority to link that. And what we'd like to do is we don't know what we don't know, so.
We're in the same boat.
Come the attorney, go research this and like to come back at the next meeting.
It's, it's one of those. I'm out of eastern Colorado. I farm with my dad out there.
Nice.
So it's like eight, nine hours. So, I mean, I could, you guys could send it to me or call me. Yeah, that's fine.
Great. I presume Clayton, you have information to reach?
I can get it.
I have the information.
Oh, okay.
Great.
Thank you guys for hearing and.
Oh, thank you.
Like I say, it's trying to get these things out of a ditch, so. It was that situation and it is what it is. Shame on me.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Public Health Division.
Oh, stand up there. You were focused. Going about seven.
Going out. We have, we're bringing two contracts to you today for our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program. Steve's base contract is an annual contract based on funding that basically pays for Steve's program, his wages, and all of his costs. And then the second contract is a four-year contract that we bring to you that gives the, that pays $10,000 towards the county health officer's position. And so then that, you guys have a separate contract to contract separately with Dr. Fitz for his services, but this is the contract between. But session that you're a little worried about funding for these positions because they're under the CDC guidelines and, or funding mechanism is how it all kind of falls down through this grant. Comes through the CDC. So as of like last Thursday, the state found out that they received 72% of their funding for this year. They're going to seek the remaining amount for the full contracted amount.
This coming year between July 1 and.
So it's my understanding Dr. Fitz's contract is solid, like that funding has not been touched at all. It's more the base contract for like Steve's position. And from the state, their focus is on making sure that we pay our Public Health Emergency Response Coordinators and pay their benefits. And then they will seek the remaining funding, you know, moving forward. They had to commit to something at the federal level, so they committed to 72%. So they'll try to. If the rest of this, am I saying it right?
From my understanding, I believe they have that money in hand, the 72%, and they're, they're trying to get the rest of it. And of course, using that funding for mostly payroll, obviously to keep everybody in their position going forward and then trying to get the additional funding. And then I believe they're going to ask to, for the counties to provide any other expenses while they seek the other funding. And there'll be a letter coming from stating that. Right now, we need to sign the, the original contract that has already been through the lengthy state process for next year. And then they're going to hopefully have the money by then. If not, they'll send out a letter saying, here's, here's the new funding amount. Here's what we need to do. And we, there are a lot of unknowns at that point, but it is coming. We did want to give you guys a heads up on that.
So Steve's base contract's $97,000, which definitely they have a. Or I had cell phone kind of thing, service and then trainings and travel. And I can pick up, we can pick up trainings that are, we have a first funding grant, so that would be, and then they've just shut off any travel or any other costs. So like literally, we probably. They'd be asking the county to kind of just float us a couple hundred dollars a month until they figure it out at the state. So most of the costs will still be covered.
So on that contract, is it, is it half and half? This will have 95,000. How much did the state pick up?
Actually, the feds fund the whole.
But this year, they're only going to fund 72% of that?
So they've reorganized at the state level, so they've cut out all their travel, all their trainings, everything they possibly can so that we can pay our PHRC.
We're looking at 28,000 plus cell phone benefits and all that stuff?
You guys are looking at a couple hundred a month. They're going to still pick all that up?
So I'm not understanding the 70%. If they pick up 100% of it, they're only going to pick up 70% of it.
So, so what occurred is you gave us a lot of relevant information, but it wasn't in order that we could follow.
Yeah, sorry.
We have numbers going all over the place, right?
Fair, fair enough. If you'll permit me, we'll try this again.
Thank you.
So the federal has a cooperative agreement. They used to call it a grant, but it's cooperative agreement because it comes with deliverable things I have to do right in my day-to-day job. And they give that to the state. The state then runs their state program and then programs throughout the counties, and that's what funds my job. The problem is for the next period, so starting July 1, going through June 30, they only have 72% of the money in hand, which, you know, taking nearly a 30% cut on any budget is very, very difficult. I'm sure you guys are well aware of that. With that being said, they have reorganized it at the state level from the money that they've gotten from the feds to be able to provide the counties the money for the entire year for just salary and benefits. So they're, they're promising to the counties that we have the salary and benefits for the entire year. What is in question now is additional money for things like travel. They're going to send us a letter that says we can bill later, you know, bill it back if we get a budget.
And how would you advise us how much it is on a monthly basis moving forward?
$200.05.
Would you invoice us that or?
I'll probably put it under like our 800 line, our Health Fair line, you know, just pick it up and keep it in a separate little, like we'll have documentation, but I'll charge it to one of my, one of my county lines, or I could charge it under a phone bill kind of line.
So what usually happens on that specific bill is Verizon bills the county, the county pays it, then we seek reimbursement from the state. The state pays the county back, much like my salary and benefits.
On a monthly basis?
Yes.
Great, that was my question. Okay, so monthly you would submit us a voucher to the clerk's office for $200.05 for the add-ons outside of the salary itself. Correct?
Right. And training and travel, I mean, they've just said no travel. So like they've just told them that there won't be any travel. So all of those funds that were in his budget for travel and trainings, his required trainings, we can pick up under a different grant, you know, like so we don't have to, so the county doesn't have to put out much money. I have several different grants that we manage and we make it work out.
This was included in last week's budget then. Great. And all at once, everything just fell into place.
So that may be the thing is if they don't get their full funding, they'll probably send an amendment to this contract and say, we're not giving you the full 97,000. We're giving you just the absolute cost of Steve's salary.
Yes, I understand. Okay, are there any questions or discussion in regards to this?
I'm sorry.
Good? Good?
Yeah, oh, I'm fine.
Anyone care to make a motion in regards to a monthly voucher payment to Public Health in the amounts of $200.05?
Well, actually, I can just put that under my budget already and we'll make that work out. What I really want to motion is to approve this contract. That amount.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract with Wyoming Department of Health, Public Health Division for the amount of 97. Thousand dollars.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second contract in the 97,000. Department of Public Health, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
You.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the second contract with Wyoming Department of Health, Public Health within regards to the county health officer. In the amount of $40,000.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second for $47,000 to the Department of Public Health. Any discussion in regards to that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. Sorry, that was so consoletive.
Living in interesting times.
You got us winded out.
Again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, appreciate what you do.
Absolutely. We appreciate your support.
Correct, thank you. I wasn't sure if Clayton was on the catching?
Yeah.
On the side or? Next on the agenda? I'm sorry, please?
Clayton just asked me to handle a few of that work, just be.
We're good to execute this, what you think, Clayton?
Sorry, I'm forgetting this gentleman's name. Tell me your name, Chris Woodley, Woodley, you're, uh, you're about the, you're about the easement for the utilities? Yeah, so they this is what they're talking about. I was gonna suggest that since this gentleman came here to talk about that, that he could visit with you about it. I've reviewed them and they're good to go, but if he wants to visit with you about those.
Please, come forward, thank you.
Hello, everybody.
How are you?
My name is Chris Woodley. I'm the president of the Fandiel Rayphone Pistol Club. And we, uh, we started on this thing twenty years ago. It looks a whole lot different. It's a very nice range. We've been working with Miles Anderson, with Game and Fish. A lot of it has to do with hunter safety classes. We help them out with their students. And Miles has applied for the, with the state for a grant, so we can finally get power to the, the gun club itself. We've got the two buildings up there. And what I found out was I needed to talk to you folks about uh an underground right-of-way easement. Uh, we cannot move forward on anything until we get your permission for this easement. It will not cost the county a penny. We have not, as far as I know, asked the county for money in the past. This will all be taken care of through the, um, the grant from the state. They gave, technically, Game and Fish and our club sixteen thousand dollars to run power. I, I didn't know I was gonna be up here speaking. I can, these are identical, if you guys want to take a peek at them. I have to have, if your approval is, is there, I have to send two copies back to Pacific Corp. Like, we will not this is the contract. This is another amount that Pacific Corp is asking for. And it's, it's simply issuing where they're gonna run the power to the buildings. They will be putting in a new transformer. The club will be paying the monthly bill. We, we're looking at a, a private contractor to do everything Pacific Corp doesn't do. We've got more than enough money to take care of that. We have more than enough money to pay Pacific Corp to install everything they need and hook everything up. Um, and again, the county shouldn't cost you guys a penny. Um, we've been pretty fortunate with membership. Um, when the booms were going on, we got money from the various entities out in the patch. It's a nice range. It's been taken care of pretty well. I personally spent a lot of time there making sure that it stays the way it is. Um, we have the two buildings. Membership in the club allow you to use the buildings, if you will, and basically being a member, you get target stamps. If you're not a member, you gotta bring your own, and that's pretty much all there is to it. If we have power at the range, Game and Fish, if they choose to, they can have their hunter safety classes right at the range. Um, but again, we can't do anything until we get permission for this underground easement. And I guess that's basically what I'm asking for.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, this is the first time I've been in here, so I'm
No, you're good.
You could give lessons, you could give lessons, you did a good job.
I'm sorry?
You could give lessons, you did a good job.
Appreciate it. That's what I'm asking for, and it, I, I have to have two copies that I need to send back to Pacific Corp.
Thank you. Any questions?
Please. Mr. Chairman, move that the grant, the underground right-of-way easement to Rocky Mountain Power, legal description, township thirty-three, range one oh nine west, section seven lots one, two, five, part of the shooting range, assess of parcel number three, three, zero, nine, zero, seven, two, zero, zero, nine, nine, five, zero, zero.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wayton, an underground right-of-way easement for the shooting range on the afforded legal, legal description and parcel number. Is there a second?
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you all very, very, very much. It's been a long time coming.
You're welcome, thank you for everything.
What to go about? Uh, on, on this here, all I really need, and I wasn't sure who the grantor would be. I'm assuming it's one of you guys or all of you guys?
I've already signed it.
Oh. You got copies there?
I do.
I need two copies to send to Pacific.
I have two.
Don't you need copies for yourself?
Yeah, what, what we're going to do is we're going to pass them back.
Okay.
And then, uh, please give them to Mrs. Saxton here. They need to be notarized, and then we need a fu- copy for our file.
I've got two of them here.
No, I need, I need the notarized when it's all said and done. Jer- just hand them to Jaren then. Those two. To Jaren.
Oh, to you?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Janice.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
The county attorney's office?
Nope, we're all set.
Okay. We've been doing
Do you want him down to your office or?
Advancing things down here, it's a nice place.
So, any idea how many members there is?
Sorry?
Any idea how many members there is?
Approximately a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Um, my secretary does the membership in the summertime. He usually goes to Southern Utah. January's like four months or so, and I'll take over the membership in the wintertime, which I use it for the bulk of it, which is fine, and I'm speculating it's about a hundred and fifty people on and about that much problems, which is next to nothing, which is awesome. People pick up after themselves, it's taken care of. That's what we're here for. Um, I personally take a lot of pride in that place. And it's just what I do, it's what I enjoy, and uh, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, Chris, I'm, I'm a member up there and I appreciate, I, I am a member up there and I appreciate, I am, I appreciate the facilities. I did, I did, it took a while to get it back, but.
Yeah, usually, uh, you have the new combination?
I don't know about the new one, so, I don't know about the new one.
I'll give it to you before I go.
Sounds good.
Actually, if you get a pen, right down. Two, five, three, six. Perfect.
Let me get my pen ready too.
And remember, your daughter-in-law's been very helpful down there.
Yeah, I know, she's she's pretty excited about being up there, being able to target practice.
She helped me stay in one of her buildings a couple of years ago. Yeah, and it's like, wow, this is really awesome.
Yeah.
It's usually the board members that do everything. Trying to get membership to do anything is is, it is what it is. And members of all their clubs, and it's always the same thing. Board members usually do everything, but we all enjoy it, so. Um, it's all good. I don't want to take more of your time. Thank you so much for making my day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Debbie shoots?
Yeah, she got her, I think she had nine millimeters.
I've got, I've got this other stuff that I've got a thing going on, it's in the Rocky Power.
Let me get your number, because I gotta get them recorded as well.
Well, I'd say give it to Rocky Mountain Park, then Rocky Mountain Park.
For me?
Just get him Rocky Mountain, and you're in charge of it.
Okay.
So you want?
Clayton, I have a grant agreement between Wyoming Department of Health, Public Health Division, and some county, was this event taken care of, and Janice here? Is this gonna be executed at the
Yeah, it was in my package that
Yeah, so
Where are you going?
I'm sorry, I didn't see the documents that she's was that what she'd already just had you sign?
They were not in my package. No, I have not signed those.
Okay.
Been back here.
You don't go yet, yeah, there's depends that if you make short rounds, it may have to go back to Reno and then back to Reno. Just depends.
Are, are we sure these aren't what you guys just signed?
Those two are, yes. Those under your left elbow are the ones I'm questioning.
So I think it's the same document. They just have a cover page.
Okay, if you're comfortable, it's the same, great, but I wasn't sure.
Yes, these are yes, these just have a cover page and these ones don't.
Okay.
So you're good.
Thank you.
Yep.
He's got news that yesterday. A lot of change in the news fires here. Yeah. Catering permits, you're looking at?
Yep. I think I'm done that far. Just copied down the backs of others.
There's one catering, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so there's two catering permits?
Yep.
I have a motion to approve two catering permits, one for Fandiel Lions Club at the rendezvous pageant.
David Fellowes?
Two catering permits, one for Fandiel Lions Club and one for Mountain King. Make a motion to approve those.
Motion made on two catering permits?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Chairman has a motion to approve a charity bond for David Fellowes, a bonder and Go Back Ranchers and improvement district.
I have a motion for David Fellowes charity bond. Amount of five thousand dollars, motion made by Commissioner Bradley, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
I did.
Oh, second by, I apologize, second by Commissioner Vickery. All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Here you go.
Up next, Clayton Malinkovich, county attorney contracts.
We've gotten through all the contracts.
Okay.
The ones that I had, so we had Janet Lee's and then even if he gets to hear it.
Okay, and then also have you down for executive session?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me on favor, aye, opposed? Okay, we'll move into executive session, thank you. Very close to the end of our agenda, and I see that you two have been sitting there quite patiently. Is there something that you'd like to bring up or?
If we can do a public comment now, or we can wait to the end, doesn't matter if we're like not working, kind of retired, hanging out all day, but if you have time, I've been.
Why don't we just do it? That way you don't have to hang out here. We'll start charging rent.
My name is Carla Byrd. Kelsey Rabner is with me, and Kelsey Rabner is with me, and I'm a public land user and a resident of Pine Dale. So this is a map that was up to date until Saturday, and then it changed, and it basically shows, can cameras see me?
I think the camera's...
So the camera's actually back.
There you go.
I'll hand, I'll give you guys a, I'll hand out the key. Camera shows, maybe, a, uh, lands that may be for sale in the big beautiful bill. And you've heard of the big beautiful... They're doing... And I'll read you the tax comments I have. But this map, that I printed out, I'll tell it to turn out this morning or yesterday, has already changed, because it shows the lands, this shows on Forests and in Sublet County, that would be for sale potentially under the big beautiful bill in order to raise... Raise money so that different tax changes could be made. So I'll just read this. It's easy to read. The Senate bill under consideration contains instructions for the BLM and Forest Service to sell lands for two reasons. Create opportunities for housing and generate the money. This map is confusing, and it contains many areas that we love. It contains Fremont Lake, it contains the Wyoming range, it contains the Upper Green. It directs the sale to occur within five miles of existing settlements, and in no areas containing valid rights such as mineral leases or wilderness designation. But may also occur in areas of checkerboard or difficult to manage. Some of the words are changing because the act is being written right now and might be finalized in the next couple of weeks. So we really don't know what lands will be up for sale. This is a loophole. Loopholes for sales for which the public is not allowed to comment. Secretaries of Interior and Agriculture will be on a fast track to identify lands for sale within 60 days of the law passing. Then within the next 60 days, and so on, until from 0.5% to 0.75% of all BLM and Forest Service lands designation waters hold. Maybe 3 million acres, except in Montana. Will all of it come from Wyoming? We don't know. The bill shows no limitations. Lands available will be offered to state or local governments first, but we have to wonder if local government has the funds to purchase these lands that could then be possibly used for lower income housing. If not, then high bid gets them, and I can foresee cases where rich people can come in and purchase property and build mega mansions. This is not precluded in the draft bill, much is changing between draft and final. This map is out of date, as I said, because on Saturday, the bill was rewritten to include all Forest Service lands and BLMs that even include grazing permits. The first map said, well, if there's a valid existing right or a grazing permit, we won't sell it. But then they said, well, we can actually sell the stuff with grazing rights, grazing permits, excuse me. So everything that's not designated wilderness is... Sell. But that by lens of... That for recreation are of concern. Today, I'm participating in a democracy because I feel my voice is heard, and thank you for hearing me. But I don't have a high level of trust in our federal administration right now, and I have been actively calling our senators to seek more information and to basically object to a fast... Tracked sales program that does not allow for public comment when parcels are identified. Because presently, laws like the National Environmental Policy Act and Federal Land Policy Management Act and the National Forest Management Act require public comment prior to actions like sales. Like in a democracy, this law gets rid of pesky public comments, I guess, makes our country more of an autocracy without allowing for public comments. So you, Sublet County Commissioners, may be asked to identify federal lands for housing. If you do, I request that you do have a public conversation about possible lands for housing development. For example, I would not like to see more housing developments approved within pronghorn and mule deer migration corridors. I would not like to see Fremont Lake sold for housing development. I would not like to see wild parcels in the Wyoming range or the Upper Green or down by Big Sandy sold to rich landowners. Not in Sublet County, but I would not like to see Elk Mountain privatized due to that pesky checkerboard. I do not want wild habitats sold to rich landowners without public comment. So I'm asking people to call Congress, to ask them to remove the land sales from the tax bill, or to at least require public comments, and follow the existing BLM RMPs and National Forest Management plans to identify lands prior to sale. Thank you, guys, for listening.
Oh, thank you.
So, I can leave more copies of this if you guys would like more. And it's just basically an update so you guys know what Congress is thinking about.
So you don't think probably why they changed it Saturday or whatever, or what's going on with that?
Well, they had originally said, um, sell lands close to communities. It's for housing, but we're not going to define it as low income housing. Um, and then they had said originally, but we could also do checkerboard, or we could also do lands that are difficult to manage. Seems like they took that out in the last... Or we just include all the lands with, with grazing permits, so maybe if somebody wants some additional lands that weren't on the original map, I mean, there was quite a bit on the original map. And then they just... Doesn't have a valid mineral lease because... Hopefully, our senators and councilmen who get back to isolation will consider, and the public should be involved in these conversations, and shouldn't be just the rich saying, hey, I'm a white. So I thank you very much.
So, thank you so much, please.
So I'd like to make a comment, uh, by your presence. Very well done, by the way. So, my wife and I, as just residents, nothing to do with the commission, have already sent emails with our concerns about this land grab, if you would, that's being... Where, where's it being initiated from? I don't know. I suspect, as you just said, it would be big money out there, because someone like myself, if I wanted, couldn't afford to buy what they're talking about, and, and affordable housing around New Fork Lake. I mean, these people, what are they thinking of? They're not thinking as to what it amounts to. And, so, you're right in regards, the public needs to be aware, but unfortunately, the public, and sometimes I fault myself, you wait till that horse got out of the barn, and then you say, oh, we should have shut the gate. And so being aware prior rather than later is so important, and I would encourage you to put your letter out there wherever it can go, and make people be more aware, because there will be a lot of us that will have our head in the sand, and then we'll wake up someday and look and say, well, why can't I go there? Because we sold it, we, not me, and not this group, but the folks back in DC or whomever it is that makes those decisions. So, uh, we have, my wife and I have conveyed our disappointment and our elected representatives for not representing us in this instance. So, there, that's my take on it.
It's interesting, Montana got their lands withdrawn because of their very, very strong representative that said, this is the sword I'm falling on, we won't sell public lands in Montana. But all the other states have a lot of land's potential, and it's not like all of them have land, but it might be Fremont Lake waterfront, and that would be wonderful.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree with the, I agree with the philosophy here.
Old business, if I may. And there are a couple of things that, um... Oh, I'm sorry, I have, I apologize, monthly reports, we've done the catering permits. Uh, assessors office, anything coming from them? Anything from the treasurer's office? Great. Following the agenda, we're now to old business. Um, a couple of things that came up that I'd like to discuss. When we were doing payables today, I noticed that, uh, the top two line items was from a county employee paying for commissioner's lunch twice in excess of $200 from her personal account, asking for reimbursement. And I've noticed, since I've been here, other people, employees, paying for county items from their personal account, requesting reimbursement. And I'm going to go back to something that was shot down three months ago, but I feel strongly on this, and I don't agree with our current procedures. I believe each department should have their own credit card, their own card that the department head is responsible for. And they dole that out for the purchase of county items. We saw on the county's payable, ML buying beanies for the fire department. Shouldn't be ML dipping into her pocket to buy us anything, and she does that on a consistent basis. I've seen people over here in the assessor's office, the clerk's office, pick an office. We are not beggars. The department... Departments are responsible for their employees. I'm saying, if you believe that, department heads should be enabled to obtain a credit card, so clerks aren't buying a... Lunch. Clerks, people, employees aren't buying beanies. They're not buying training supplies. So I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to seriously consider allowing department heads to have a credit card. They have to sign, the department head has to sign documentation that Clayton can put together that states the responsibility and, and perhaps payroll withholding when it comes to unauthorized funds usage. You know, it's not here it is, go buy whatever, but there would be documentation for each, each department had to sign, and if they wanted to do the same with their employees on the usage of that card, that they do the same thing. Clayton, did I cover that adequately? Great, thank you.
So I gotta say something?
Please.
Going back to that meeting we discussed there, I don't know if anybody else remembers, but I was under a... That nobody had a credit card, then it shows up four different departments already have it.
Are they departments, or are they outside of, one was the library?
Well, Roden Bridge or somebody else had one, yeah. I'm just saying, I thought there was nobody had in that meeting, when we talked, I don't know if y'all remember that. Same one he was talking about, but then, like I say, and I'm fine, I don't care either way, but then wherever I saw that, there's four different credit cards floating around the county, so. Roden Bridge is just a fuel card, isn't it? Well, I'm just saying, you know, they said nobody had in that meeting, yeah, it's probably a fuel, maybe they all fuel, you know, but... But I don't, you know, I mean, I understand you go to these conventions, and somebody has to fork up money and then wait to get reimbursed, so I don't, it's a good discussion.
So when, whenever there are classes for the commi... Thousands of dollars worth, which she hasn't complained about, she gladly does, because I think she likes the points, but... The bu, okay, nope, thank you.
I would much prefer it all turned off.
Okay, so she's doing it out of the goodness of her heart. Why? I don't know, but the bottom line is, it's wrong. I said my two cents and open it for discussion, and you can move forward with the motion, or it can die for a lack of emotion.
And we all know, you know, it all boils down to abuse, okay? And that's what happens, and so, no, I'm just saying, probably wouldn't, but it does, and that's the only drawback.
So we happen to have on staff a hired county attorney that can put together a document that has teeth to obtain unauthorized funds. So yes, what you said is correct, but we also have the means to counter that.
Can I make a comment? Just recently happened, our assessment meetings are in Sheridan this year. The hotel won't do direct bill anymore unless you stay there every three to six months, something. And because I have to use...
If, if I may, would you be, use a microphone so people can hear you, please, Layla? Thank you. I appreciate that.
Our association meetings are in Sheridan this year, and we don't go there often, so the hotel won't do direct bill anymore. Um, because I have to use my personal card, they will not give me, um, the tax exempt status, even if I have the paperwork. So I will be paying taxes, taxes to go for that, those four days. So just another situation, whatever you decide, but just wanted to let you know.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the only, the only, Mr. Chairman, the only, like, I can see the validity here, but on the other hand, what we're doing was when we look at these accounts payable, we're authorizing the expenditures then. We're, uh, uh, I'm still got it, it's a minute.
So what you're asking us to do is authorize expenses before we see them, because when a credit card goes... Is... Should work. But can we authorize expenditures that we haven't seen authorized?
May I speak now?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what occurs here every week, Commissioner... Commissioner Vickery, we approve vouchers that we have never seen until they come forward to us. It's the same scenario. When these credit card charges are paid, they have to be, um, submitted with the appropriate receipts and the authorization of that department head, otherwise they can't be paid. If Janice comes forward and says, I use the company credit card, but I don't have a receipt, and, um, well, I think it went for this, then you don't pay it. So it, it's actually more of a double check for us as commissioners or the department heads than our current voucher system where we don't have a say about what's being paid until after it's been purchased. Mr. White?
And, uh, in my industry, we have a pretty healthy, um, checks and balances system when it comes to credit card payment, and, uh, I'm, I'm 100% for looking at what, uh, what the county attorney would put forward as far as sideboards on uses of it, and I would also like to see what kind of protections different companies out there would offer, government entities. We're not the only government entity that runs it, but I'd like to see what other people have already put in there to protect that and alleviate those concerns of fraud.
Excellent. Mr. Bradley?
Well, I argued against it the first time and I argued against it on the town council. But I have seen Janess and it failed me at a time or two in the little traveling I've done. And if Clayton can put together some fraud protection, I'd support this.
Somebody, oh, I'm feeling a little apprehensive, but how about this? Would you consider it more if we had Clayton put together some documentation that helps us collect money if it was misused?
Well, I don't, you know, I'm not too concerned about the mis- use as much as I am about putting a cap on what can be spent for. Because if we open up, this is my thought. We open up something that says it's unlimited, for instance. It's what it means, it's unlimited. So I think there needs to be, if you want to go forward with this, and I'll be apprehensive, I'll support it, but it needs to have a cap that's reasonable out here so that we don't get somebody going, now, let's see, I spent this, this, and this, and over a two-week time period, they might have spent $10,000 on the credit card and thought they only was gonna spend 1,500. I mean, that happens in the personal life. I don't. But I know it can happen. Take a credit card and, yeah, I'm gonna buy this, take a credit card, yeah, I'm gonna buy this, and then the bill comes in and the mail's that, holy cow, did I buy all that? So there needs to be a reasonable limit set on that thing so that the folks who use it don't get themselves in a position and they know going forward, yeah, I've spent $500 out of my $1,500, or whatever that number ends up being. So now I better be paying attention to the next trip I take, it's gotta be this or this, so that I come in under that cap over the two-week timeframe, or whatever that timeframe ends up being. And I'm not pointing a finger to anybody and not saying, hey, you guys are responsible, because you are, but I'm just saying, if you've got a department head and they've got ten people work under him and they come and say, hey, I need this, this, and this, say, okay, here's the credit call, all authorize it. Now all of a sudden, they've got to do an accounting system to make sure at the end of whatever it is, they haven't authorized more than the credit card will allow to be.
Based on our casual conversation here, Clayton, can you draft the appropriate document that would keep the county relatively protected from unauthorized expenditures and put some side rails on it?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and, if you don't mind, I'll weigh in on this.
Would you please?
On, on him to, take the hotel under everything else, same with living, so I can, credit card is important. And the other thing that I think, Mr. Chairman, that Commissioner Vickery has touched on is that concept of procurement and a policy surrounding it, like when and what things we're, we're spending, so on and so forth, so it may be an opportunity to, to work on both of those things, but I'm happy to draft up a user agreement, so to speak, for individuals who choose to, and are authorized.
Would you be kind enough to do that, please? And then we can revisit this in another meeting or two.
Okay, so and one of the other things with credit cards is the scams that are out there are incredible. I know that because we see them at my household on a fairly regular basis. You know, fortunately, the card companies have the ability to call up and say, hey, this doesn't look like you should be doing it, what's going on? And so over time, we've got an array of cards out there, what, eight or nine, that I'm telling you, scammers delight once they decide to attack. And they could take on one of those cards. Before you know it, they're $10,000 or $15,000 worth of charges on it, that's why it's gotta be a cap that's reasonable. So that, because you look at a county issued card and somebody out there is gonna say, huh, look what I got. That's the life today, that's just the way it is.
I don't disagree with anything that you've said. Anything that you've said, Commissioner Vickery. I recognize that we are stewards for the prudent financial exposure of the county. I recognize that as well as you do. I also recognize that for us to have a clerk buying us our lunch is wrong.
I can't disagree with that.
Okay, so
I'd have probably ordered something different than hamburger if I'd have known I could pay for it.
Based on the bill I saw, you did. So I'd like to find a middle ground on this and do what's for the people that work.
I think, well, I think also it's important that makes it part of the scenario, you know, because it's not such a given, Leila Card, for instance, can only have what she needs to have done, because she's still gonna have to take bend her own. Or Janess, for instance, when she bought six, seven, eight thousand dollars on that one.
When she bought all those airplane tickets. So that needs to be out there to factor that in, because why have a credit card if it doesn't do what you want it to do?
Correct. Yeah. But we've opened the door to discussion.
Okay, we've opened the door to discussion. So you guys be in part of this discussion too, so that we don't end up saying, oh, yeah, here you are, you got $500 limit when you need 5,000, something like that, and that's all I, that's what I think needs to be done, that's your prudency on my part.
It is. No one has disagreed with that. I asked Lisa Copeland to, to join us, please. And I, please, sit down. I've had several phone calls, several upset, several just straightforward, and we're still continuing with problems with our communication system. One is the voice over IT with phone calls where we haven't been able to get into different departments for a couple of days at a time. And public health had a problem with their phone and everyone's had problems with their phone, so we need to come up with a way to resolve that or something.
Can I discuss about the public health?
Well, sure.
So, um, the public health issue, CenturyLink or Lumen changed a feature in their system that stopped the remote forward. They have an outside CenturyLink line that comes into our voice over IP system. That number, as soon as it was disconnected, we called Lumen, we put a ticket in with them to try to resolve the issue. They came back and told us that there was a $4,000 bill that hadn't been paid. So then I, I don't get those CenturyLink bills, so I don't process them. We investigated that issue still resides, but because that bill wasn't being paid, that number wasn't poured over to our voice over IP system, which is BCM1, is a company that does our VoIP. So because that bill wasn't paid, the, the port didn't take place. The port will take place on the 20th, which is Friday. And in the meantime, we've had, where you can call the big piny number and it'll ring into where they can answer it, the pineo. So we've had a workaround to them, but once we get Lumen out of the picture, then we won't have that issue. But as far as VoIP, as far as VoIP, sometimes you can't call out to, we've, we've talked with Union about this several times, you can call out to a Verizon cell phone, you can call out to an AT&amp;T cell phone, but if you call out to a Union cell phone, sometimes it doesn't go through. And sometimes those calls don't come in. We've talked to Union about it, we've reported that to them. It's not just Sublet County that has that issue, there's other entities throughout that have that same issue, that's a VoIP issue and how the call goes out to the internet and comes back into Union. So, you know, we've been, we've talked to them several times for the last couple of years over that, so. And I'm not sure about a resolution on that, but on the public health, that should be resolved on Friday.
Because I called in the HR a couple of times last week and the call would never go through, I actually had to call clerk's office, they had to walk down the hall and have HR call me in order, so I could talk with them, so.
And what is your cell phone, Union?
Verizon.
Yeah, see, I've never seen a problem, because I can, I, my personal phone is Verizon, my work phone is AT&amp;T FirstNet and the calls consistently go through and, and not, so.
Okay.
And what we do is when we have, when we ha, I've put out to people, when those things happen, I have to know within a 24-hour period when those things happen. So then BCM1 can go and log it and they can see where that call went, where it stopped, why it didn't get transferred to Union. But I need to know you to have that within a 24- look at the logs and see what happens, but if it's a week later, I can't tell, sorry, I'm past.
And this is, I recognize what you said. It's, of course, having over in Janess's office and, and just about everywhere. Are you comfortable, we're doing everything that we can in this regard? Should we be looking at other providers? Should we be looking at going back to landlines? People should be able to reach and talk to the county officials when they want to, not when it's convenient for our phone carrier.
I mean, we can look at it, they converted to BCM1 before I ever came on board.
Okay.
So I don't know what was involved with that, Wozie Tech took care of all that. I mean, we could look at a different VoIP provider to see if it's better, but still, a lot of our cell phones are, I mean, on the county side are Union.
Sure.
And a lot of the public in South County, their cell phones are Union. So, I mean, I can't control what goes on with their company.
Exactly.
So we might have the same symptoms because it's voice over IP, it goes out to the internet, into the cloud, and then the call comes back, we might have the same problem.
Well, maybe we have to go back, yeah, maybe we have to go back to landline so people can reach us when they want.
Well, our, our option for Lumen or for landline is Lumen and as far as I'm concerned, the service is not great for Lumen, so, I mean, it's okay, we have a lot, they maintain our 911 system. The new next-gen 911 system's gonna be on Lumen. They're contracted, I don't have to do anything with that, but there's not, I mean, they've kind of closed up shop around here, CenturyLink has, so it's very concerning to go back to landline too.
You have any statements or comments?
Some days are better than others, but that's part of the greatness of it.
Okay, and then the other thing I wanted to bring up is during budget session, we were not able to obtain communication or outside, people outside were not able to log in and, and view. Yeah.
Yeah, we got that figured out. The last one got audio but no camera.
Okay.
Then we rebooted the system and it's not been taken.
Okay, I wasn't aware of where things were on that, Lisa, thank you.
Over in the level room, from what I understand, you had audio but no camera, which I don't maintain their system, but they've done a major update the day before. Yeah. So they had audio and their cameras weren't working. So.
Great, that's all I had, thank you so much.
Well, I had a couple of things that that I wanted to talk to you about, that, because I kind of went back and reviewed the commissioner audio recordings. So there always seems to be a concern about Wozie Tech and the amount of money that we're paying them. I pay them $87,000 a year and that's it. For two people, very highly technical, you're, you're not gonna get two people with those qualifications for $87,000 a year. So, I mean, if you look at like this invoice, for example, I mean, I got a copy of it for you, the invoice is on the back with the voucher, so you can kind of see, this is their typical monthly, monthly charge. Okay? So if you look at the 10-4-130-120 account, that's what I pay them for their salary, 7250 for two people. That's everyone. And then this Microsoft Exchange, that's for everybody's email, their Word, Excel, PowerPoint, that's for the licensing, who is who do that, all on the cloud. And Wozie Tech, because they are a provider for Microsoft, I do it through them. So that explains it. These other vouchers that I'll get from them might be for hardware, I buy my hardware, major hardware through them because they get supplier pricing. So they can beat any price that I can get. And so by, by buying through them, I'm saving money. So a lot of these other vouchers are for hardware, servers, switches, whatever, you know, so like here's, here's an invoice as an example. It's coded to a totally different account. It's coming from Wozie Tech. So other big, big monitoring and the Office 365, so this is the one, it's 120,000. Sometimes when you purchase hardware, you're better off purchasing in bulk.
So there
You know, so a lot of times when I buy desktops, laptops, I'll buy a year's worth because I can get a lot better price on them than if I buy 10 here, 10 there.
So their support for the county is 87,000 a year, whether they're here one hour or 100 hours.
Right. And, and for example, um, a week ago, we had an issue with a port on our ma, on our main core switch. I got home at 6 o'clock from work and I got a call at 9:30 from dispatch, they had no network connection. And Sterling with Wozie Tech and myself worked from 9:30 that night till 6 o'clock the next morning, so they are always available when it's an emergency, on-call, after-call, you know, after-hours, whatever, but uh, because, you know, I know we talked about an additional employee and having supportive additional employee and, and because of us growing, things changing, I push some of the, some of excess off onto them too, you know, help me out as three people, you know, but one other comment, I think Casey had mentioned about, um, he had some concerns about a server not being stood up for the RTIS system that connects to Spelman, which is part of the sheriff's department. That server's up, we're just waiting on the server software from Motorola, from Mr. Vingham. The, the other thing that I listened to is concerns about giving them, two of them administrative rights. Because we locked that down after the breach, after the hack, whatever. One of those two accounts was one of the accounts that they elevate, had elevated privileges- One of those two accounts was one of the accounts that they elevate, had elevated privileges and encrypted data and did a lot of damage because they had administrative privileges. So that's why I've been very conservative about opening that up again to protect the Sheriff's Department.
Lot more response. You know, because I had to be involved to do the communication. That was something I hadn't, I wasn't sure I stood on the additional people one, two, whatever. Because when I talked to Casey before I left on vacation, he, he told me, I'm not sure how we discuss that, that, that if we get one or two, it'll still be under the IT department. But if we do two, then one would be dedicated, but still report to the IT department. And one on the county side. But they still all three looked at me, but.
So it's your feeling if we got two, the Wazit Tech help wouldn't decrease any? That bill wouldn't stay the same?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I'm, I'm looking, I was looking for one person, not two, but, I mean, and, and a lot of my time is spent in the Sheriff's Department.
So if there was one dedicated to them, you could get by without one?
Well, I, I still need some desktop support in the, I, when I came here, I took on a lot of responsibilities that Mike didn't do, like the phones and printers and things like that that he didn't take. So I took those responsibilities on myself, which I was always used to doing anyway. So um, I don't. I still, I mean, I, I would like to have a desktop support person to train up, to have full, full expertise, but to relieve some of that where I can do the things I need to do on the backend. You know? We've, we've locked a bunch, since the breach, we've locked a bunch of things down to where people can't get to websites that they're used to going. Some are going to pro, non-business related websites, but there's websites that are appropriate that they need to. And we need to manually go and open those up in the firewall because we did a total lockdown for our own protection. So Sterling, Wazit Tech or myself, we've had to spend a lot of extra time to work through those issues on a exception basis, case-by-case basis. So that, that impacted us a lot and we've changed a lot of our procedures and we're trying to work through some of those. But yeah, and I, I've talked to you for three years about an extra person and it just reached the point.
You don't have enough people. I wish I could stop talking about that. But I, in my opinion, I'm getting, to replace Wazit Tech with that expertise, you're talking way over $100,000 each, or maybe up to $150,000.
But that, that's my opinion. Sometimes I have to compete against Lincoln County, Uinta County, but, but also it helps us. Like this ArcGIS server, Wazit Tech's already done that for Lincoln County and Uinta County. So that process is already done. So for us, it'll just, you know, they've already done it. They understand what it entails and it'll be a lot smoother. So it's good that they work through other counties besides us.
Any questions?
I don't think she answered a couple for me. So former credentials being allowed back to those two? We want to go down there?
We, we have a, we have a, a remote, um, where I can remote to any computer that's on our network, whether it's a patrol officer out, out in the field or whatever. I can get to any computer that has Internet. So we're looking at giving them administrative rights through that. Um, where they can do whatever they need to do, but not give them the full.
So far as when you were gone last week, they had some issues.
Sterling was here Tuesday through Thursday in my office, working. He was doing a lot of the maintenance issues that we had, that we were holding off, that he needed to be here to do. But Sterling was here.
Well, it sounds to me like they had some investigative things that they, they just left.
On, on Mr. Lanning's, that software, um, that he was trying to install, uh, if, if it's the one, I remember right before I was on vacation, I got on his computer and put my administrative credentials in. We installed it, but the communication still was, wasn't working. So it was some other issue, but.
So whether he.
I don't know if that's the same thing that he was working on, but, but yeah, that it wasn't. I mean, if it was the same software I was working with him on before I went on vacation, I had installed it with my credentials in it, which is what they told us to do and that didn't solve the problem.
I'm not disputing what you said, but I hear all, all different sides, if that makes. Sense. And one of the statements made was that some, and it goes back to what you said earlier, that you're overwhelmed with everything. And, and that's recognized by me. And the statement was, well, sometimes it takes her hours for her to get back to the Sheriff's Department when we would like to have something more um, real-time to solve our needs. So with this, with that statement made, perhaps you could spend a little time talking with Sheriff Lear and seeing if we, we can come up with some sort of um, compromise on this.
If I get a phone call or in the middle of the night, I usually always answer it.
And, and what, I wasn't disputing anything that you said. It's just that I hear, we hear, and if you could, uh, perhaps the door's open or perhaps it's, it needs to be open. Um, because as each person brings in additional IT people, uh, that um, direct communication is going to be more warranted, if that makes sense.
I, I think, I mean, the communication, I think, is critical. And that's why I think, you know, if you get one or two people, it still needs to be under the same department. So you have the communication. Um, and, and so just by blocking out administrative rights on some of this stuff, it's got me more involved with things in the Sheriff's Department that weren't, weren't being communicated to me. So, yeah, I think it's critical.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you.
Um, going back to what transpired with planning and zoning today, each of us received an email from a constituent, Philip Belleville pertaining to uh, what's occurring out at his place across from the airport. And um, do we want to set that aside until we have new PDA administration?
Same thing.
Sure.
Something we as a county can say, oh, administer your door and start forcing this issue or.
Correct. That's the purpose of the Planning and Zoning Administrator and going to uh, hopefully. What's Planning and Zoning Department addresses. You're absolutely right. Um, do you turn a blind eye to it? And by doing so, you're turning your eye to, eye away from planning and zoning requirements?
Yeah, yeah, I, I just don't know that one person is gonna be enough. Or two in that office. If we, if we go down this road of enforcement, what is enforcement? What can we do? Well, I mean, our, our, they've got pretty strict definitions in the, in the regulations that are. We can look over by every. How do we? Put some push on it?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I mean, what has rode up that? Does, does he have the jurisdiction to go around and write him a ticket or, yeah, I don't know. I don't either. I mean, that's all I. No, it's gonna go to you. That's where it's gonna end up anyway.
Well, so there is enforcement provisions in your planning and zoning regulations. Seven bucks a day for every day that they're in, out of compliance. So if you're.
But it's been, it's been that situation 15 years.
Well, so that is where, and this is where we've had this conversation before. The reality isn't to, uh, Commissioner Bradley's point, like, there's a lot of violations all over this county. I think you need multiple people in that office if you're going to be able to tackle enforcement. Enforcement has not been, and like I say, Dennis is right there if you want to grab him. But based on the, based on my observation, that has not been able to be a priority for their office, given all of the rest of the things that are on their plate. Because they basically don't have the bandwidth to be accepting processing applications, working on regulation updates, so on and so forth. If the county wants to do comprehensive enforcement.
You think this, these people come in, try to complain in there to you, where would they go?
Dennis addresses it. He addresses it. He calls the landowner and a lot of times they can take care of the problem without having to have an enforcement process.
I bet you they haven't been told a lot, because this has went on since they built that building.
Been up for a few years.
That's what I'm saying, you know?
And so I'd say, I don't know if they've gone through this one. Dennis complains, he usually calls me and we talk about it.
That's what I'm, what we tell those people. They call us and they send us emails that their next avenue is. We tell them to go to Dennis. Is that what we tell them today?
They start, yeah, that's where enforcement.
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, do they need to go in there and then see how far they get in that? I mean, I don't think they can get very far.
And, and that's the reason for the email is they've been dealing with planning and zoning and they, and planning.
None of us have seen the emails. You guys are talking on an email and I have no idea what you're talking about. So I, if I'm, if I'm weighing in on not the right issue, I apologize.
Well, a tangent of what the email is, yes, you are, you are. But at the same time, it, I think it's more in-depth than what um, you're trying to explain. And the individual obviously has contacted Planning and Zoning several times and brought it up. And the result is um, not.
So at the end of the day, who settles the argument? He's out there saying, well, this is all private, this is personal. But yet he's running, could be running a business out there. So everybody that calls in a complaint, no matter where it is, who draws the line and says, no, this isn't personal? This is, you're running a business. Who, who makes that decision? Well, it goes in, you know, you're not supposed to stay in that building.
I'm aware of this situation.
So the dad's standing in there when he comes up. When he built it, it started with that.
I didn't discuss it with you.
What's that?
I didn't discuss it with you.
I'm aware of it because it's come up before.
Okay, I thought you said because I discussed it with you. I didn't.
You know, I've discussed it with, it's come up, it's come through, like, the question on that has come through Dennis's office. I don't recall what ever happened with it.
Sure.
Well, nothing because the problem's growing.
Thank you.
That's, that's where we're at with this one.
The statement.
But it's not just there. You can drive any direction in this county and find just as big a problem.
Exactly.
You know, but it's our responsibility if somebody does complain to follow up. They give the contact issue. And if somebody, three next week do, you know, same deal, we need it.
And that was the beginning statement. Do we wait for a, a new administrator to begin?
Probably make sense.
So that ought to be in the administrator's job?
That it was. So, and I have to go with it in addition.
Okay, bear with me one more time, Mr. Commissioner Vickery.
What?
I'm using your words. Bear with me one more time.
Okay.
Couple of months ago, we were talking, last item I have, but what? And Clayton brought this up several times and Sam's brought it up and I've brought it up and. Where to, exactly. Policies and procedures, do we want to establish that or do we want to keep things like they are?
Policies and procedures for what?
For the Board of Commissioners.
Bylaws for the.
I didn't hear what you said, Clayton, speak up.
I said an inside joke.
You don't have to hear it. We know. Bylaws, bylaws, bylaws.
Well, the inside joke is that when we gave the training, the transcript, this transcription on the computer, when I said bylaws, it transcribed violence. So it was like, my answer is violence, violence, violence. So it's an inside joke.
So currently as it is, and everyone's aware of this, all of us have the same rights as everyone sitting at the table. There is no difference. I conduct a meeting and unfortunately I have to talk more. Well, maybe. So.
No, you're not winning that award.
So do, do you want by, bylaws for the Commissioners? If so, great. Clayton was kind enough to send out uh, bylaws as adopted by the Planning and Zoning Administration, keeping in mind that at the same time that's sent out, it's um, it can get rather stringent as far as what occurs and how meetings are conducted and who does what. Thoughts, Sam?
Yeah, for uh, we're gonna do, establish some thresholds and decide what are we trying to accomplish with these bylaws? What are we trying to fix? What are we? How to build, what are we trying to? Work for us and then also let officials know this is the principle of how this commission operates and conducts business at this table. I'm not opposed to them. They're set up with that in mind as far as anything else goes. I mean, yeah, when I first joined this commission, it would have been great to read a, a paper saying, hey, this is how the rules of this commission work. There was a lot of, a lot of learning curve that would have probably been bypassed, but I'm at the pleasure of this board.
Okay.
I think it'd be fine. You know, I mean, how you follow them. I mean, you know, it'd be good to have some direction, you know, I mean, you still, you know, it's hard to set anything in stone.
It is. And once you go, put your toe in that water, you're going to have stones.
So I'm, I'm good with it, you know, so. Yeah, I'm fine. I'm not up here to hide anything. If there's a way we can make things smoother and, and easier for everybody, bylaws make sense.
What are you looking at me for? Matt just said I get to earn the award.
Full transparency.
Well, you know, I think structure is. you know, I think structure is fine in some instances, but I still like to be able to have, when people come in here, to know that they don't have to cross every T and dot every I in order to sit down, have a conversation that means something. It's okay to gather around a campfire, so to speak, once in a while. Uh, and maybe that's oversimplification, I don't know. I know that structure is fine. Have an idea of what you can or cannot do, what you want to do, or what you don't want to do. But it's not something that's, we're gonna put together, we're not. And they're out here that are from the Giants, or whoever is out there, because they're all part of the process. And when they come in here, they gotta be able to come in here and say, speak with their conviction, not knowing they're gonna get chastised because they didn't follow, oh yeah, you were supposed to do this instead of this. So I think we need to be very careful when you structure these things, so that you don't make it so inhibitive that somebody says, huh, I'm not going into there, look what you gotta do. I think, quite frankly, I think the way you've been going has been a kind of not-so-bad, in my mind. Yeah, there's some protocol that probably needs to be tightened up a little. Disagree with that, but I don't know. Put something out there, and we'll look at it like everything else, and we maybe can make some changes that are better, or maybe not.
So since we have budget behind us, do we want to think about this for a meeting or two, and then we, then revisit it? And see what has fermented in your mind, and because once this is a very casual board, obviously, but once some of these changes occur, then it's no longer that same makeup. And so it's an important step to take, or not to step? Not to take. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, public comment at this point in time? Please.
Chairman, you're familiar with this Big Piney Airport MOU, this was the email you sent me yesterday. And I had said at the time that I did not get it. I did get an email from, Mr. BJ Mater today, that they have signed it, um, and he brought me up to speed on what it is, and this. The grant's agreeing for the airport. For infrastructure grant agreement. Is this ringing any bells for anybody? Okay. So he had emailed me, had gone through you, so essentially it is the Big Piney Airport applied for grant, they received the grant, they received the grant.
This is to do some.
This is, this is the, uh, airport development noise program implementation. And I'm sorry, this came in while we were in the meeting, and I, I, I thought that I was thinking the person you guys were on the way to. It needs to be signed by. Think it has to be signed by. But essentially, it's just the county signing off on this so that they can proceed.
It's not a match grant for the county.
No, it's their grant. It's the county signing off on it. Similar to other grants that they've got in the past. So I guess the big question becomes, do you guys want to allow, um, Chairman Bernard to, to e-sign, it's a, it's a, it's the e-signature, it's, we don't have it here in front of her. But I did review it, and it is, it matches the rest of their grant stuff. BJ Mater has signed it, and then essentially, yeah, it's been signed, they've got their attorney. You'd like to, just relaying it, it's coming during the meeting.
Your confidence is similar, it seems they've done the best.
It's similar, so if I can give you, uh, like, hand this computer to somebody, they can read the title to make a motion. Sorry, it's a long one, so. So here's the grant number. Do you want it, Sam?
Sure.
Here's the, here's the grant number right there. And I would say, I would suggest the motion to authorize Chairman Bernard to sign that behalf.
So Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the chairman, um, to e-sign on behalf of the county, the grant um, for the Big Piney Airport, Airport Infrastructure Grant Number three dash five six dash zero zero two dash zero two zero dash twenty twenty-five. Um, this is a grant with authorization from Big Piney, Marlton Airport, Joint Powers Board, to the town of Big Piney, town of Marlton, and Sublet County. Did I cover everything?
Would you repeat that, please?
Just the middle part.
Is that, is that a friendly?
I have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Bradley, all in favor. I oppose. Great motion carried.
All right, so just go ahead, you've got the even ground, you can sign that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Clayton.
Yes.
One more, are we back down?
Um. We're at the last item, open for public comment.
Okay, so I have a question on the contract for the helicopter. Because we're paying, we're paying for the, the pilot to be authorized to fly, so to speak, at the tune of forty-seven hundred dollars. But in, within that, it also allows him to take off and go do something else, or somebody else, if there's no conflict with his, uh, requirements in the county. So the question I have is when
Was it that, or was it training?
It's the same thing, training.
I'm pulling up the contract right now, I think. It is part of the contract.
Doesn't show it, but that's okay.
Well, and I guess it, so I saw your email, I didn't get a chance to go through the entire thing, I pulled up the agreement. Um, I'm more than happy to go through it and get you a.
I'm, I'm not, oh, yeah, no, that's fine, but I think that the company should be paying for the guy, because there's two or three different individuals that they can send in here to run the helicopter. And if they want to include in the contract, fine. Well, they could have, I don't, I don't know the number, but they've, there's three or four of them in there, and it just seems to me like the company supplying the aircraft, and we're supplying all the money to operate it and that kind of stuff, they should supply the training for the pilot, not us. Check that out, it's.
Yeah, I can, I can check into it. You also, yeah, you, yeah, I'll look into it and I'll circle back.
Okay, fair enough. I don't want to negate the helicopter, but I just, it just, when I read through it, it looked like we're paying for the pilot, and if he's not working for us, he can go take off somewhere else. If that's the case, that's fine, but the company that's supplying the pilot should be the one that's picking up his licensing fee, or his authorization to fly, or whatever, yeah.
I can, I can check the contract, I can circle back.
Okay, thank you.
You guys are going to public comment. That time period for six-twenty, we're supposed to get back comments, I don't think you have any comments.
It just came in.
It was mailed on June ninth.
I just.
Yeah, this is still, there's nothing to do on that.
Okay, great, thanks.
You guys are doing public comment, I think you were gonna do another executive session?
Yes.
One more before lunch.
Okay, open for public comment? Please.
There's a meeting in Rock Springs for the resource management plan.
What would you prefer?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to throw in a couple, my two cents.
Please.
So I can't make it tomorrow. Um, I think you, uh, get some value out of being there in person with the after, and informal conversations, so I would like to, respectfully request if Jess, Janess can make it, that she go in person, and anybody else that could go with her. I just can't make it tomorrow.
Great, thank you for that. I have appointments already for tomorrow, so I'm not able. Okay. Are there any other public comments online? Okay, um, shall we take a break for lunch, and then go into executive session?
Whatever you'd like, you guys probably eat lunch in your executive session if you wanted to.
That would be just fine. Good for you, because you get grumpy. Janess, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session for Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A Roman numeral three. Ryan?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Bradley, all in favor. I oppose. Move into executive session.
One thing about it, we wore them out, there's nobody, nobody, you gotta leave.
On the bigger, we can take a session.
I agree.
We impose.
Back into regular session with no action taken in executive session pertaining to personnel. Last item on the docket, which is new business, uh, is pertaining to a job posting for the Planning and Zoning Administrator. This was prepared and provided us by Andrea Jean, the HR Director.
What I'd like to see is, I seem to have a low problem with the past, you know, the monthly report they present of activities, activities they did, you know, like, septic tanks, I don't hear what.
Remember Building Permits Act, do you?
Yes, monthly, come in, required to come in, and show me what you went up, say, several inspections, or, I don't think it's asking too much. Acquired education of a bachelor's degree, you lose somebody over that. I mean, there, there could be some qualified people that don't have that.
We can put our equivalent experience.
I'd like to see that.
It would be pretty informal. I can assure you that.
Chairman, what you asked for.
Yeah.
You're talking to the wrong group to say that.
Oh goodness.
That one?
Which one are you liking?
One that's like sublet county job description on it.
Yeah, that's
department head scale.
Yeah.
Do their research and figure out. And that's all public information if they want to look up.
So the job description is what I want to put that they'll see is in their job duties. You can add to it whatever. For the job posting, which is the other one, I can take anything out. It's getting really long.
So this is your opening description?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I need to keep that on that pay scale. To especially considering, well, I guess it depends on what you guys decide on. For Tess's position also.
I think you've got this pay scale.
Yeah.
So it's a wide range. We've got room to work.
Yes, the problem is, is if you look at the planner two at the end, it's seventy one, seven fifty five. And the beginning for the, yeah, the department head scale is lower than that.
Well, hopefully, hopefully it could be
They can be and I can just take off the end range. That's, that was going to be my advice.
The experience thing is huge.
Yeah, I agree. If we take it off and we could just put
I think what you find is if you have somebody that's really interested, they're going to, they're going to roll and all that to you.
Yeah, they're going to know what their worst.
Yeah. And the, and the experience thing, you look at it and say, wow, that's what I'm getting.
So when it, when it comes to Tess's position, since we're at the seventeenth, we're going to run this for a week, ten days.
Well, that was about, I also wanted to talk about, or do you want them both ran together?
I, I think that we try to fill the administrator position and if we do the timeframe is such, if she's not leaving until the end of July, that person could be part of the selection process for the office.
I think, well, and then you'd know based off experience, maybe what you need for the associate planner.
Sure.
Yeah.
Have some goies and mix it there.
So I think we just stick with the administrator right now and then your thoughts, Dave? Good with that, Sam? A good view? Give him, you give him cake and
Making me sure I don't take it.
You just made the statement you'd like more.
Yes, please post what we just discussed. Ten day posting, is that sufficient? And do
Depends on what we get.
Start with that.
Start with ten days.
Well
I, I mean, I would like an end date that they know.
Well, correct, that's, that's where we're ultimately working towards.
When they know
July thirtieth, then we can have them for the first to look at.
June thirtieth.
Or June thirtieth.
Yeah. June thirtieth.
Okay, I'll get it posted.
Thank you so much for doing that. Anything else that needs to be discussed? Except a motion to postpone meeting. Motion by Commissioner Bradley to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Vickery. All in favor? I, any opposed? No. Thank you so much.
Going forward, it's pretty big.